Continue on eating and going backwards whatever you need. You will just report.
Good morning. As I sat there and looked at the screen, I noticed there was a mistake right off. Twenty fifteen. So hopefully that's all that goes wrong. And I consider myself lucky that is. But I'm open to any questions as we go through these slides. Don't be shy. You don't have to wait till the end to ask questions.
I'm pretty shy.
Yes, you know that. Just because there's a different learning here for different members of the council, I thought I'd briefly cut away at what the department does. We have these functions: planning, zoning, part employees, building and safety, seven employees, office of development assistance, four employees, code enforcement, four employees, and economic development and redevelopment too. Now, there's some overlap with these. There's Jeremy, he helps with redevelopment. He also helps with COBA. Paul, the same. I'm the director and I'm part-time in economic development. Because a lot of the functions that we do in our department are regulatory by nature, I kind of lump some of these in together because there's process that we go through when somebody comes into the building permit. It goes through planning and it goes through building and safety. So as a general overview as to what kind of work we've been doing, in an regulatory function, you know that it's kind of driven by what comes in the door. And so what we try and do is demonstrate that we're doing more with the same amount of resources. So over the last year, we have seen over 2,000 permits processed, which represents a 14% increase over 2014. Building inspections, almost a 20% increase over the previous year. Now staffing levels of our department have really not changed that much. We had Tom Burdette, who as you know retired. We did pick up Kim Dab, another billing inspector. So our staffing levels have remained fairly consistent. Yet we have produced a process, a lot more work. And I think that speaks well for the department. It speaks well for the people that we have. Want to cover code enforcement here really quickly. I'm very glad and very proud to have code enforcement in my department. They're good people and they do some probably unpleasant work, put it that way. This is just a quick, some of the things they did last year. They had 1,287 cases. Of those, they closed 80% of them. There's 252 that are still active. 123 of 139 criminal subpoenas are served. Two murder bait cases solved. And over 100 federal subpoenas, current civil litigations in cases. And code en-
It's quarter rebate with a B with that one.
Hopefully you're not one of those. But some people just collect tons of stuff in their yards. And a lot of these actions are triggered by complaints from neighbors. We don't go out and look for enforcement opportunities. That becomes real unpopular fast. So as these calls and complaints come in, we send our code enforcement guys out to see what's going on. If there is a violation, we issue a citation. Very sensitive and very delicate work police people do. And they're really good people. No one's going to be happy when we go out. Here's some goals that we're looking at. As I said previously, a lot of what we do is processing requests. So what we're looking at is streamlining the process a little more this year. That's a big goal for code enforcement. There's a lot of legwork that has to go on, a lot of legal sensitivity. And so we're looking at just streamlining the process. Let me touch on planning and zoning now. Scott Langford is here and I'll have him make a presentation after mine about cap and grade. So hold on to your hats.
That's for you.
Right here.
That's for Dirk, right?
Sorry Dirk, I was not meant to-
I might hold on to my hat.
We have five full-time employees in zoning and planning. City planner, two senior planners, one associate, and one planning technician. Just to give you a little bit of perspective on what kind of work we do with few people. You compare this with some of the other cities and municipalities, with the exception of West Valley, we do more work with less people. We're all top-notch. All really good. We're finally taking on a fairly heavy workload this year. We've seen building permits dramatically increase. That just puts a heavier load on our staff. So these are some of the things that we're looking at. In the upcoming year, what you'll see is some change that we want to make. We want to do some code changes or some things that have lengthened over the years that have just never been brought up to speed. We're going to try and bring those current. Not big items, but there are things that we need to address. One thing that is going to be a big item is signing code. So keep a lookout for that. Here's how it kind of breaks out. Building permits, business licenses. Compared to one year to the next. All right. When I sat down with Mark, we talked about what might most interest the city council. And it was decided that economic development is top of the list for our department. So let's go through some of the, a couple of things that I'd like to discuss. Coming up in May, we have an international council shopping centers convention in Las Vegas. We attended that for a few years. It is a massive, massive convention. One of the biggest they have. And it's been seeing the numbers. There's thousands of there, over 42,000 in the east. And Councilman Hager went last year and maybe-
Mayor Olf.
Maybe you can tell us what you thought.
I've been at shows. I like to display at shows. This is the best show I've ever seen. Next, well, yeah, that I've seen and been part of. They figure I'm sure of that.
Yes. So we're opening the invitation to anyone who would like to go. Come down and take a peek. These are in walking shoes. It's walk and walk and walk. But we found last year that there were some fruits of our efforts. We had approached Mayor Olf and Councilman Hager and I went to talk to Firehouse Subs last year. And they had, at the point, at that point, were toying around with, looking at Jordan Landing, slotting Jordan Landing. That deal is still alive and they're still negotiating that for some space out there. We also spoke with Marriott Hotels. And they're also looking at Jordan Landing too. So although it's primarily a networking convention, make contacts, plan proceeds, we have seen some fruits of our efforts. And that is in May. Mayor, did you have anything to add to that?
Just that we, for two years, we've met with Home Depot. And both times, they've blown us off. But I'm pretty insistent about discussing with them their next location. We haven't built any new Home Depots, according to her, in two years. That was as of when they weren't planning to build any. But I took our plan that you prepared and I said, "This is where you need to go, the very next one you build because of our demographic and because of the building activity on the west side." And I learned just two weeks ago that they're this close to one of our developers signing the deal. So you never know how things happen. And it's in the vicinity, not right where I pointed to her. But she was pretty adamant that they weren't going to build any new ones. But the developer told me they're really close.
David? You know, because he won't chew his own horn, but this is David's turf. He comes in from, and I'll tell you, all the people, I'd be walking with David and- David! You know, so he's kind of the, this is, and I think if we as a council, that's why I'm thinking it's not just two of us, but most all the other cities bring at least three or four of their council with them because it's the support of the mayor and the city manager and the discussion of growth. But David's an expert at working this type of show, so.
All right, we do have kind of some philosophies when we go down there. There's, you'll find retailers, you'll find brokers, and real estate agents and developers. We think that we get the biggest bang for our buck by looking at the brokers because they have a huge network of tenants. We like to go see some of the tenant, the end users, but really our most productive time is spent with the brokers and the developers. So if you decide to come, get ready for a lot of walking. You'll lose a couple of pounds or something like, lots of walking.
It's huge. It's really huge.
You do lots of walking and a lot of talking? Does that make you a walking-talking?
Yes. A walking-talking. Okay, let's just look at a, cover a couple of projects that were completed this year. There's a lot that's going on, but I just-
That's a leap of faith.
-threw in a few that, well, we had some influence on these projects. The first one, the CBS Pharmacy, as you know, this was a project that just completed and at the initial stage, Steph had a pretty heavy role in this. So we took a, a reused corner and got a good project out of this. Mark Rodrick, wondering who is industrial building out here. Steph had to work with him on some impact fee issues in order to get this up. It's 80,000 square feet. And I think he's got, his first hand is 20,000 square feet, so he's getting leased up. So anyone who's looking for industrial space, it's got dock high loading in the back. This is available and it's a good price. One thing that was a challenge with this location is its proximity, or lack of proximity, to I-15. That becomes a little bit of a challenge. But we think once Mountain View Corridor gets punched through, that this is going to be an extremely active area.
And if you notice, that tenant is Royal Electric Supply, so they're a electrical wholesale supplier.
And this is the Holiday Oil that everyone just wanted to get done. They opened yesterday. I went in and took a look at it. And the floor plate is bigger than the standard Holiday Oil. I think they're trying to compete with the Mavericks of the world. So if you get time today, stop by and buy the candy bar or something.
I was just there at 5:30 a.m. this morning. And it is a unique holiday, actually. It's got a lot more space in it. It's really a nice, really a nice holiday, so. And I'm so excited after about 15 years of having nothing but- Nothing but ugly looking old buildings on that corner, so.
I hope you're going to share that, Sam. And mine, too.
I should do that. That's true.
We finished purchases, Woodbury Property. It costs us $4.5 million. We see this as a pivotal piece of the development of that area. I'll just explain, Mountain View Corridor is huge for us in the future. This is perfectly situated for development. As you know, we've been looking at our dealerships to go in there. And I'll address that in just a little bit. But this is, Steph did a good job in putting this together. We had like, what, 60 days, month and a half to put this together. That meant all the title work, all the due diligence. It was a lot of work in a very small amount of time. So congratulations to all those who helped. Okay, let's take a look at some of the projects that we've done in progress and on the horizon. As you know, coming to City Hall, you see this building. Just as an update, they're looking at completing this building sometime this year. This is the Maverick. We've got two Mavericks going up right now. One out of 56 West. We're 57 on the west, one on 13th West. We've received the plans and so that speaks well for those two corners. It will change those corners.
Yeah, and if you're impressed with a new holiday, these new Mavericks are a new, they're a new floor plan too.
We'll take all we can get.
That's right.
This is an update on Jordan Landing T O E project. As you see in the red outline, that's under construction right now. That's the first one. We think that that one will be done in fall 2016. Shouldn't be a pretty good project. And I'd like to thank those who assisted so far. I know Jimmy Ackley did look at the fire issues here. Since it's framed up, it becomes a target for arsonists, so he's got that on his radar. Barter Station, we have plans in, under review. We think by the time everything's done, they'll start breaking ground in 2016. Now, the next couple of projects I'm going to talk about are a little bit lengthy, so bear with me. The City Center project is right over meeting right now. It's owned by the school district. And this is something that we've been working on for a long, long time. Since we don't own the property, there's only so much we can do to make this happen. But we had a developer last year who was looking at doing this project, but for one reason or another, you know, with the land purchase, those of you who are ready for that, didn't work, so he bowed out. We have since spoken with another well-known local developer about this project, and they're very interested. At this point in time, we have sent over to them memorandum of understanding for their review and return. They're good with that. They're going to go ahead and start spending some money on planning and design for this site. And when we met with them initially, a month or so ago, one principle that they said will make this project work is density. Because of the cost of the land, density has to be a pivotal key in making this work. We went and had IDI Group go ahead and do some scenarios, three scenarios for this land. So take a look at this. The red represents retail. The blue represents office, and the yellow is residential. So as you can see, there's others in all of these, a fair amount of residential, density residential. So that becomes an issue. I'm not going to get into that right now. Option two is a little more weighted towards the retail. As you can see, I kind of favor this retail and more office. I like the concept of a little open space, gathering place in the middle. And here's a massing, so this gives you an idea of what it might look like. As you can see, they feel that the key to the residential is centered around the track station. This is option three, primarily, mostly residential. This is my least favorite. Any questions?
I think you can send a message to them that option three is not even going to be considered. So I think you just as well let them know that right out of the chute.
Option two. Pete David?
Yes. I don't know, they play Sugar House lately. I don't know if you were involved with that when you went up from Salt Lake.
A little bit, yes.
What about some of those concepts they have had up there? I mean, I already completed and I think they did them in five years.
Well, yes. Sugar House Commons, yes. I got involved with that a little bit on back end.
Is that pretty nice? Walkables, you know, has the trolley now there. Anyway, just an idea.
Yes. Now, these are just massings and conceptual. The developer will bring in his own guy to take a look at these and maybe change them a little bit. But we're really optimistic. This developer, you'll learn who he is in the next month or so. He's a known entity. He's done super good projects that you would recognize.
What's happening next month, we'll get to find out.
Come visit me. This is phase seven of Jordan Landing. This is Loews. Just to give you a little context. And this is phase seven. As I mentioned earlier, at ICSC last year, we went and met with Marriott. And they have come in and they feel like they can create an extended state hotel on this site. There was a little bit of an issue with parking, just like last week. They felt that we were requiring a little bit too much parking for an extended state hotel. Now, extended state hotel, let's kind of put that into the proper context also. This extended state hotel is not where the missionaries live. This is a business hotel. Who come in for a week at a time, leave some, a few days together while they're transacting business. That's, this is the kind of hotel that will be. And our, our parking ratio is about, was it one and a half per door? And to them, they said they can't make that work. So what we'll do is staff and go ahead and do comparative analysis with some of the other municipalities. That's what they require and see if that, for me, is a little closer to making this transaction work.
So for every room, it requires one and a half parking spots?
Yes. And the philosophy behind that, and this is something, one of those cleanup things, that people who visit these extended state hotels are, it's like their house, their home, so.
When you say they're looking at an extended stay, is it particularly like the Fairfield brand?
Yeah. Can you just, I'm glad you see there.
I'm comfortable with it. I mean, I think it's usually, I mean, when I go, there's a couple of us, one car for three rooms or something like that, so we have only one stall per room, so it's pretty simple.
It seems like a pretty easy fix, but we'll bring that forward as soon as possible. And as we've talked to the hotel developer, we think at least there's spot of concern. That's all we do. That should get us the deal as far as we're concerned.
Like one or like 1.1? Have to include staff or something?
They want one each one.
I think that's sufficient.
There's some factors, like are they going to have a meeting room or not, things like that? Sometimes when they have a meeting, then you've got external people coming to the facility. And if they're not, then you don't need any extra space.
All of the Fairfield brands have like a conference room and a little work area. And then they've got like a little dining area for their morning breakfast, where they have the eggs out of the carton.
I know Moab just built a new Fairfield that just came out and it's full. Ask them what their ratio is and if their parking seems to work for you.
I think it's a neat new project for us. This is the Copper Hills Marketplace CD that we just approved or in the process of approving. This is going to be a winner for our city. The revenue that is generated on this project stabilization is substantial. And it's not just the property tax, but the sales tax is equally, if not superior, to property tax generating in this project. So thanks for your cooperation so far.
I'm pointing out the aerial for the red center, just right there.
Red center will go up here. And could go here. We've got, as you know, we've been negotiating with a car dealership to come into this area right, to, on this corner right here. Just to give you an update, we have engaged our legal counsel to go ahead and start drafting the development agreement. And once that's negotiated, we'll bring that to the council. But everyone involved, and this will be, the first one's the toughest one to get. Once you get one and it proves successful, one will come.
Where would you put others? Along 90th or what?
Well, I talked to Merrill Bonker, who is one of the partners in Bone Best, who own this property. He's open to developing that. We figured that we could put between three and maybe four on this corner alone. And so we take that and look at this area compared to this. And we do have an option on-
Just park capital.
Property from Woodbury. They give us a lot to work with. Control of the land is critical. And where we have land, and they're sure willing to work with us, it's good. It's a good thing for us. The swap with Elliott's Church, since we settled the lawsuit, this is, a lot of criteria is starting to be pulled on this. My contact at the church said that they have gone ahead and run this through their committee. And they have surplus that, and they're willing to deal. There's some issues that I'll advise you now that could create a, some bond. The church is looking at, because of the development that's going on here in this area, they saw the need for another building. And so when we told them we have this land that was available for trade, they said, "Okay, we'll take a look at that." Their standard format requires four acre parcel. They have five acres over here, we have two here. This has 78 south furnished. It's more developed. This has 78 south furnished, it's more developed, so as you can tell, it's going to be inequity in, in property values, yes.
Has the cities ever, you know, had an agreement with the church to create some of these recreational fields? Because I know in our area, we have one of those where there's a baseball diamond, big pavilion that the church owns, but I mean, it's all still about that community, you know, the whole community uses it. Have we ever, is that a possibility of getting that extra acre, and doing an agreement with the church and having some kind of rent there?
Well, the broker, and I talked just two days ago, and we discussed this issue because if we just swapped 5.3 of the expensive land or four acres of not so expensive land, could have to come up with some cash. And so he's sensitive to that, but we, we don't want to do that, we don't have to. So he's going to approach the church about taking more than four acres here. And Dave Clemmons and I sat down, and we figured that if they took six acres, we might have to come up with maybe $50,000 cash. It's a small, very manageable amount. So that's how we're trying to work this deal, so that we don't have to come up with a lot of cash, if any at all. And if there's a lot of cash involved, that becomes a real thought provoking issue. So what I've tried to do is, is in order to resolve that issue or address that issue, I've already contacted several developers on the back end to take this out of this. The appraisal we got was about $6 million for both parcels.
We have the appraisals back, and just by getting hold of the LDS piece, it increased the value of our northern piece quite a bit, more than eight foot property, so if this works out, it'd be kind of a windfall for us.
This is one of those no brainer type of things. This is, this is a good thing for us. And the developers are lining up with us. And last but not least, Mr. Palace has contacted airport folks about the development of this property. This is just conceptual.
So it's 106 acres, and we heard rumor that the airport authority wants to lease it on their board, and they said, well, we might think about it in about a year or so. So the rumor isn't exactly true, and part of the rumor was that they were going to sell it, and we would not like to see that fall into private hands, because it is part of the airport, and we see it as an integral part of the future of that airport. Four Square sees it as an opportunity to increase during landing, and we had, what, three main formations, with them, they're very excited about getting this. In my meetings with the airport authority, I told them upfront that there are possibly two developers that want this piece, but we don't want them to lease it to them directly. We would like to lease it as a city, so we can do the master plan, and then we'd supplement lease it out. Our ultimate plan is more, it's larger than that, and I think some of you have already met with, I'm talking about that. For now, that's probably the best piece of property in the city right now, if it's allowed to be developed.
Very good. That's the end of the presentation, I don't want any questions now, then we've got Scott to address the cap and grade.
So one of the cleanup projects that you mentioned, is that, so I was talking with Dan Loz from Planning Commission the other day, he was talking about the need that we still have to clean up all the WSPA zones that are not in the WSPA anymore? Is that part of the?
We can do that, we can look at those. Usually, our efforts are triggered by some call or complaint that comes in.
Right, so you wait for, wait for a developer to come in and say, this is WSPA zone, we want to do this?
Yeah.
But the planning commission could.
Yeah, or we could.
Sure. Mayor?
I think we're doing really good in advanced planning. We're doing really good on high density developments, and really good on gas stations and convenience doors, and. The one area that we haven't been able to be successful for about seven years is we haven't landed any large projects from EDCU. And I'm going to go back to, I mean, we had Project Hawaiian Land, that we went from 100 down to 12, down to three, and lost it to Gilbert, Arizona. We've had Project Flick, that front burner, we lost that evidently to Tremont New Dock.
Yes.
Which blows me away, but we lost it. The one that we talked about in closed session last week, appears like it's going to South Jordan now.
Yeah, can't conceive of all of that.
And I don't know, you know, I'm not an expert in that field, but I think we really tried, but I'll quote one, well, actually, two of those people that directly spoke to me, areas don't show well. So I don't know what we got to do to show better to these large projects, because like I stated, we're the only city with 6,000 acres left to be developed, we have a power grid that's second to none, we have all the utilities, and for some, some reason, we can't close the deal. In two years, working hard, the whole staff, myself and the council totally supporting, we can't close the deal on any of these, so I don't know what we got to do, but I think we got to change, switch gears, do something. Because this latest one, I don't want to lose to South Jordan, looks, appears like, from all the indicators, it's going there, so. What do we need to do, or maybe we could make a plan and get it back to the council of what we need to do differently? Because these are huge tax dollars for our city, I mean, these are not the little, we love all the little developments as well, but when you're talking about half a billion dollars, the property tax alone in that, let alone the, the jobs it creates, is something that we need to land.
Right.
So, I mean, I'm just.
We'll put, we'll put something together. I, you know, there's a, everyone has a threshold to gain, if you will, how much do we contribute to these, and at what point does it not make sense to put money into these? So we're trying to put together some general guideline as to, is there, how much tax income would be willing to give up, or how long? So that we know that, well, if this goes to you guys, we're going to walk, we can do that. So we at least have some kind of idea or concept of what can we offer these companies to still feel good.
Yeah, and I think that's on a case by case basis. A $150 million project like, like Project Flick is way different than a half a billion dollar project like Hawaiian Land and like the one we discussed in closed session last week. That's, you have to look at them piece by piece, but I guess our dog and pony show hasn't been real good, because I've had two of them state to me that we don't show well. So I don't know what the other cities are doing, you know, I mean, it happened with the mayor of Draper real well, and they have landed no less than 20 Class A office spaces. Of course, they have a freeway, we don't yet, but they've landed no less than 20 four story new Class A office spaces. And the retail that they've been able to land, and most of it was just down at the, most of these connections have been down at the show. And we, for some reason, we're just, we're not being able to capitalize on some of these. They look at us, we make it to the final list, but we're going to close the deal, so. I, I'm looking to you to tell us what you got to do differently. Half a billion dollars, I'd like to know what the, what the property tax would be on that, even at a 50% rate, the increase to our tax base here. So anyway, I just, I, we've done very well in other areas, but we just can't seem to, I mean, we used to get it, Oracle and Kraftmade originally, Masco, but we just can't see them for about seven years to get anything done.
We'll work on that.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Turn it down a little, Scott.
Well, we've got to keep you guys on schedule, so how much time do I have?
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
Can you come in?
All right. I passed around a little packet that we have prepared for developers, and anybody interested that thinks they're our doors on where we are with the cap and grade ordinance. The ordinance has been around for about two years, and so we've had some time to kind of play with this a little while and see how it actually functions. And so that's why I'm here this morning, and I'm glad that we've got a good group here, because this, this particular ordinance affects everything from parks to wire to fleece, so it's pretty important. But before I get into the details of this, I want to just talk briefly about the challenges that Mayor, you and the council have when you're dealing with all of these ordinances. You start with these texts, and they transition into plans, and then we, we get the real world built environment. And so sometimes, that's, that's a challenge, when you're reading the actual documents, okay, how's this going to really play out in the real world? And not only regarding cap and grade, but everything you look at, right? So just to keep things on the light side, as you look at these ordinances, you know, sometimes you need to ask yourself a few questions. Is it a literal application? What is this really going to look like? Or perhaps you need to look at it from a different perspective. And then sometimes, the, the complex problems that you may have, it's a more simple solution than you may realize. So that's why we have government, that's why we have different people from different backgrounds, so we can get the different viewpoints. And so your input is very, very valuable. Milton Friedman was an economist, he was an advisor to Ronald Reagan, also the prime minister of Great Britain, brilliant guy. He made this comment regarding economics, but I think there's some strong parallels between that and local government as well, okay? Ordinance 1515, that is more commonly known as the cap and grade. And some of you may be familiar with the ins and outs of this ordinance, others are a little newer, and we can take time to go through that one one if you ever need to discuss that.
Thank you.
But basically, the preamble of this ordinance describes the intent quite well. Basically, it establishes a ratio of single family detached homes compared to multifamily, the 77 to 23. And my predecessors who created this, we're right on, I do not disagree with, with this ratio at all. Could it be tweaked a little bit? Sure, but I think providing a balanced community is, is something that's very important, and I fully support the, the intent of this ordinance. Some, a lot of forethought went into creating this, it didn't just, just cap everything and restrict everything completely, it provides for a few exceptions, okay? It, it allows for multifamily units in our transit station areas, so we can leverage the significant regional investment in our transit system. So we've got six light rail stations in West Jordan, in, in our designated TSOD areas. Great, go ahead and build those high density projects, and we've got several coming online here in 2016. Senior housing, age 55 and older, that acknowledges a different demographic and their needs. And then C and D, those are effectively protected classes, and, and we needed to include those in the ordinance. So regardless of, you know, if there's changes, if there's no changes to the cap and grade, I want to just let the, the council know that we've got probably 70 pages worth of co amendments that I'd like to get to this year. A lot of them are very small, but they've been put on the back burner for so long, it can cause hiccups and challenges for us as we try to administer the council's vision. One of those changes is going to be this, I've bolded and colored this red, if you read the intent, the full ordinance, it talks about, it doesn't discriminate or differentiate between owner or non-owner. But this, this little paragraph here, I think is a holdover from previous versions of the cap and grade ordinance, and this has caused a lot of hiccups and, and difficult conversations with developers. And so we need to clean that up and basically strike out this. So that'll be coming probably in the next few months, regardless of what we talked about In your packets I gave you, we've got a full chronology of all of the events that have led up to what the ordinance states today. You can go through that on your own time if you, if you'd like, but it basically has been, been kind of inactive since 2014. The groundwork was laid when we adopted the general plan back in 2012, with the ratios outlined in the general plan, and then this ordinance just gives us a little more teeth, okay? So again, you can look at that at your own time, there's a full, full chronology in your packet. So my purpose again today is just to give you an update of where we are today. We wanted to really run the numbers and see how this has played out in the past two years, and where we are right now. The, the purple is all of the multifamily projects that, that are vested. They, they were able to get grandfathered in before the cap and grade was, was enacted. All of the red are multifamily projects that are existing, and you'll notice that the vast majority of the available developable land is out west, no surprise there. So let me briefly run through the numbers real quick. So as it stands today, we've got 25,233 single family detached units in the city of West Jordan, good size. Multifamily, just over 8,000, these are existing. If you look at those percentages, okay, not too bad, we're shooting for 77 and 23 in the cap and grade, but if you include the vested multifamily, which is pretty significant, that brings our percentages down to 70 and 30. So we've got, we've got our ways to chip away if we, if we want to hit those end goals. Cap and grade, so to hit the 77%, we need to add another nearly 12,000 single family homes. Just to put that into perspective, in time, this past year, our building department approved 272 single family residential permits. So based on that information, you can see how long it would take to get to those 11,747 units, nearly 40 years if we were to do 300 permits per year, a long time. And that's okay, build out takes time, we're all, we're all right with that.
Scott?
Yeah?
The thing that that chart doesn't depict though is the transit oriented developments and the, those with special needs, and those that are owner occupied, that are duplexes or townhomes. I'd really like to see the percentage of, when you add the Boulder Inn, you add Colosmos Project Inn, and I think it goes closer to 40, 60 than it does on those projects, they're already, they're already going to be built.
Right.
Plus, we got a new one coming at our, well, it's not yet, but our downtown area.
Yep.
Is, we're talking about another 3,000 or 4,000 units.
There's a lot of variables. So the 3,038 includes Colosmos, it includes the, the nearly 1,400 units at Jordan Valley.
Okay.
It includes all of that.
Okay.
And in your packet, I detail all of the multifamily projects in the pipeline, vested grandfathered, and that totals the 3,000.
Is in there, okay.
So, but, but to your point, Mayor. So, but, but to your point, Mayor, there's a lot of variables that, that can pull those, those ratios down, and if we were to do something special here on this property, which I'm hoping for, it's going to, it's going to skew things, right? So we'll see how this plays out in the real world. So we've got basically 2,900 acres of vacant land designated for residential development. Now that includes everything from very low density to high density, and most of that's on the west side. And if we were to develop, if we were trying to replicate what we've done on the east side of West Jordan and, and put it out on the west side, the, the existing 25,000 homes that we've got, the average density is 3.21 units per acre, which is pretty low. And in your packet, I've, I've created a, a chart that compares density to some of the existing subdivisions that you may be familiar with in West Jordan, so you can kind of get an idea of what these numbers actually mean in the real world. So 3.21, to hit that, we need 36, 60 acres. So to, we, we simply don't have enough acres to replicate what we've done on the east side out on the west side. Just don't have enough land. But if we were to increase the density slightly to 4.11 units per acre, then we would have enough land area to, to hit the balance established in the cap and grade. I'm blowing through these numbers really quick, it's all in your packets and you're welcome to come and talk to me later. But 4.11 acres per acre, it's not too bad if you're looking at quarter acre lots. So it's, it's a numbers game, there's so many different variables, this is just a simplified version to look at and consider. So as I've been back here in West Jordan since August, we've had a number of big developers come in looking to develop hundreds of acres. And we're still working with them and I'm going to talk briefly about a couple of things. Again, I fully support the ratios established in the cap and grade, but what I'm seeing is perhaps unintended consequences that I wanted to alert all of you to, so you can be mindful of it when you're reviewing projects. Okay, one of these things is not like the other. So what I did, I went along the lots at the front and looked at, I compared some similar developments, similar-sized homes, similar-sized lots. This particular development on the left is in Draper. The yellow lines are alleys, so this is an alley-level project, smaller lots than, than we typically find in West Jordan. Maybe around 6,000 to 5,500 to 6,000 square foot lots. So fairly high density for, for most folks. And I wanted just to show you the comparison. So the one on the left here, that was developed without any architectural controls, without any real incentives to develop to a higher standard. The one on the right, again, we're comparing like-sized homes to like-sized lots, apples to apples. The one over here was created in a development that had high requirements and standards for architectural elements and you can tell the difference, not only through these pictures, but if you were to drive through these two different developments, you would really, it, it's a feeling you get when you drive through a neighborhood, right? The one on the left, there's no way I would ever want to see this built in West Jordan. This is built in Draper, the one on the left is on Draper, and the one on the right is in South Jordan in Debrae. And so the reason why I wanted to bring that up is we've, most of you are very familiar with the Jensen Project. I'm very happy that we still have them in play and that they, of their own volition, have requested a PC zone, which legally allows us to, to require a high standard of architecture, good amenities, and there, there's some, some real good significant legal control that we can make sure that these, even the smaller lots are developed out to something that we can be proud of, okay? Here's some, yeah, you're familiar with those. The other one is called Oak West, just down the street, 7800 South and U111. This was their original project. They were not able to get this grandfathered in before the cap and grade ordinance was done, so they cannot proceed with this because it has multifamily units. They've got townhomes down here, fairly dense, and then as you work up the hill, they've got some, some larger lots. So what, what we have in, in our office today and what the planning commission has reviewed just this past Tuesday is this plan right here. They forwarded a negative recommendation to the city council based on this design. Now at first blush, you may say, okay, they went from this to this, that's great, fantastic. I think, you know, most people would be okay with that. Well, the dark blue and the light blue are 5,000, 6,000 square foot lots, and we've got nearly 200 lots that are, that are fairly small in size. Now if you were to develop those out with high-grade architecture, good amenities, it might be an okay development. The challenge, and this is where my concern lies, there was no incentive for this particular developer to come in and request a planned community zone. What they did is they came in, and this is the regress right here, they came in with our standard R15, R16, R110 subdivision, which does not give us the, the legal leverage to, to require high levels of architecture, highly amenitized open space. In fact, they don't even need the, the minimum open space required in a planned community zone. And so it's kind of a backdoor approach to try to get their unit numbers up. And from, from our, our professional opinion is that there, there's a lot of variables, a lot of unknowns, which lends us to ask the question, you know, in five years, what is this going to look like? 10 years, what is this going to look like? Are we going to have a lot of turnover and rentals and the things that might tap into our police and fire department resources? So those, those are, that's the big, biggest concern that I've got with, with the cap and grade. I like the ratios, but there's no incentives for these large tracts of property to be built out as a community. When you're dealing with, you know, 7,500, 200 acres, you're not just approving a subdivision, you're, you're reviewing and approving a community, and it should be balanced. This, in our estimation, is not a fair, balanced community.
Scott, if we made that one, one change to owner-occupied as an exclusion, he'd probably go right back to the other one, right?
Yes, the, the developer has come on, he's, he's been on record by, by saying that if we were to potentially look at an owner-occupied exception, they likely go back. Now zoning is a, the mayor and council, you've got a high level, high level of discretion when it comes to rezoning property, you do. And so there's, there's really no, nothing pulling your feet to the fire to, to approve this, but as we look at the current exemptions in the west side, or not the west side, in the, in the cap and grade ordinance, I kind of drafted an option that I hope that you can kind of mull over and consider. Again, in properties that, that are, are large and, and have the ability to really create community, I'd like to incentivize this PC and PRD where we can have that, that control back in our court. So we're looking at, you know, property over 75 acres, if you're, if you zone it to PC or PRD, if you decide to put some two-family, multifamily housing in there, stick with the ratio, the balance, don't upset the balance, but within the context of that large master planned community, do the 70s, you know, make sure you don't trip over that 77 to 23%. And then 0.3 at the bottom here, perhaps consider just, you know, dialing down the screws and making sure that we can keep it to owner-occupied. Now I'm not naive to, to think that this, you know, if you do a townhome development, that an investor might not buy up one or two of these units and rent them out. We can't micromanage that, but at least it establishes a good environment where you have people buying into the community. And I'm hoping that if the, if the council looks at something similar to this, it doesn't have to be necessarily this, that we can incentivize this PC and PRD zone.
Well, I mean, if we, if, you know, on the owner-occupied, if they have a definition of what we, we deal for that, then sure, we would put in there that they can't rent them out as a, as a business. Now an individual can probably do that, but a lot, no. But I've noticed because the rents, the rents on apartments are higher than they are in a purchase of townhome. And I just went through that, I was paying 1,600 for a two-bedroom apartment, now if a townhome, I'm paying 1,200 for three-packs and a lot more space. But that's where the money is right now, so they're building the townhomes to rent, and then later on, they're just going to then sell them off to owner-occupied. But I think we can come up with a language to include that.
And to your point also, if it's in a PC zone, we can put the level of architecture to a certain level, to a certain point, where it's going to command a higher, higher selling point, and it's going to weed out some of the, the investors that we will. But anyway, there, there's a lot to consider, I've thrown a lot of material at you and, yeah.
So for somebody that's lived here 39 years, 40 years is very long to balance our city from my perspective. You know, I'm hoping some of the younger folks to think, oh, we need it now, now, now. But this, this city's grown slowly, and I think our, some of our past councils have made some good decisions, and I think this is our decision, is it a 40-year decision? Maybe.
Yep. I agree. The 40 years, 50, 60 years to build out does not bother me at all. I just don't want these, these developers to come in through the back door. And so when I was considering coming back to work for West Jordan, these are some of the points that, that came to my mind, and perhaps you have some of the same feelings about, about this wonderful city. From a professional planning standpoint, I love the fact that we've got a pretty good balance, we've got, we've got residential, commercial, industrial, we've got a good transportation network, great people both living here and, and the staff. And so just in summary, going back to Milton, questions to think about, you know, not only regarding cap and grade, but everything that the planning department brings to you, you know, we, we are here to implement your vision and we want to make sure that your visions are accurately portrayed and conveyed in ordinance and law and in application, so we can make sure that our city continues to be a great place to live. So I appreciate your time and if you have any input, please feel free to contact me and I'm happy to go over some of the details.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Our next guest is Joe Spencer. Joe came and met with myself and a couple of council members about a month ago. The law was changed just about a year ago, I guess, to allow for special improvement funding, and I didn't want to try and tell the council what happened, so I invited Joe to come for a few moments.
I appreciate that. See, I'm in a car here, so if you've got questions afterwards, give a call and fill in some detail here. The law's been around for some time that allows the, sorry, my wrist this morning, just trying to use this brace. The law's been around for some time that allows a special assessment area to be created. They've been tweaking a little bit, so put some updates to the law for you, but, you know, great. What I do is I work with developers. I'm a consultant for developers to help them put assessment bonds in place. I'm not a municipal financial advisor, thank you. I don't, you know, I work with municipal financial advisors with the developers as we're putting these things together, so it's, that's not my role as a municipal advisor, but I do work with developers. And I've got to tell you, there's a lot of developers who are highly interested in putting in residential, single-family homes in West Jordan, that this tool might be something that could make a huge difference for them. Assessment bonds, probably most, I'm just going to rip through this really quick here. What are assessment bonds? The property owner, the developer, in sense, have a bond put on his property. It puts the public, it's to fund public infrastructure, sewer, roads, that sort of thing. It's not there for building any Florida poll, it's only there for public parks, that sort of thing, and it will pay for those sorts of things, just the infrastructure. It's for residential or commercial development, mixed use, those kinds of things can use assessment bonds. They're payable from the assessments against the owner, so the developer, there's no property tax levy, there's no public vote needed, you don't have, it's not like a, a GO bond where you have to get the residents to vote for it. The city, this is important here, the city is not obligated in any way to pay the debt service on the bonds, so the developer has to pay, but not the city. There's no, in no case, in, in the way that I work with developers, in no case will the voters ever have to back on the bond, they'll never come back on the city. The bonds are secured by a lien on the properties in the assessment, and it's equivalent to a property tax lien. So that lien actually goes ahead of the first mortgage, ahead of whatever other loans that are on the property, is equal with property tax. So it's, so the bond buyers that buy these bonds love that because no one can get ahead of it. And so it, it creates a municipal bond, because it's paying for public infrastructure, it's a municipal bond, the interest rates are a little bit lower, and that creates some value for developers. On projects that are maybe just a little bit on the edge, maybe doesn't quite make sense with the financing they would normally have, if they use assessment bonds, it can make a significant difference in their project and you can bring in, yep.
So it goes individual property owner, single family, we have this?
It does, and there's, there's a lot of flexibility. Sometimes red ledges put an assessment in and they left it there for the homeowners to, to deal with over the time. The developers I'm working with, I'm suggesting that they fly that down essentially, when they sell a house, that they take it way down to very little, just, just to the point where it makes sense for them, not, it's not a, a way to just, greedy developers could probably try to leave it all for the homeowners, but the likelihood is, is the homeowners would say, wait a minute, I've got this big assessment, I've got to have a lower price to make up for it. So the market can demand that they have a little common sense.
But they still have a lien on infrastructure that we use.
That's, well, that's right. And so the infrastructure is public, it gets given to the city, so there's a, that's correct. Now, just in, in any kind of legal questions, I brought Brandon Johnson along, he's an attorney that, municipal finance attorney and has had a lot of experience. So if there's any questions that, that I start fumbling on, I'll probably just turn towards.
One of the ones we'd like to know is, say, someone defaults, he's got one home in the subdivision.
So we still have access to that, of course, we will stop.
Absolutely, absolutely.
No, 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 if, if the one homeowner in the subdivision, there's 300 homes, one homeowner chooses not to pay the assessment, then that one house is the only house that's in danger. And it's in danger of being foreclosed, because if they don't make the assessment, it's just like not paying your property tax. You, if you don't pay your property tax, you're going to get foreclosed, you're going to lose your house. But in, in reality, what happens is the mortgage holder will take care of that and then go back to it and say, listen, what are you doing, you're not paying your assessments?
The lien is on the property itself, not on the infrastructure, so even if, even if there's a higher development, the foreclosed, the city would still own the infrastructure.
Yep.
We say the city, the requirement is that the infrastructure and whatever is financed with these bonds has to be publicly owned, so it doesn't necessarily have to be owned by the city, but it has to be owned by a public entity. by the city, but it has to be owned by a public entity, so it could be like a sewer district or a water district. But anything that's financed with the assessment bonds is owned by the city or a district, and cannot be afforded by any entity, and that becomes the city's property for other actors.
Okay, so.
So there's no risk to the city of losing the infrastructure, even if there's a foreclosure on the property itself.
Thanks, you appreciate that, yep.
So this bond, is the bond, the city itself is obtaining the bond, and then the people, do they pay the city, and then the city pays the bond?
That's, it's flexible, there's some flexibility in the way that works, that's correct. The municipality essentially sponsors the bond, and then the municipality that does the bond, whether it's the city or something that we'll talk about here real quick in the next slide here, the municipality would manage that, so they collect the assessments. If the assessments are behind, they foreclose or start the foreclosure procedures. Once there's a house in place on a property, the likelihood of foreclosure is almost zero, because if there's a loan in place, the mortgage holder's not gonna allow a three- or four-hundred-thousand-dollar mortgage to be wiped out because five hundred dollars wasn't paid. So, you know, so the municipality will get hold of the mortgage holder, send them a notice and say, starting foreclosure process on this property because five hundred dollars wasn't paid, they'll just cut the check, get back to the homeowner, force.
Could that be escrow, so they pay?
Absolutely, absolutely. Certainly, it'd just be paid as part of their, just like property tax, it could be escrow, just like property tax. So how it works out is a developer consents the creation of the assessment area, and a levy of the assessment, the city creates the assessment area, and then levies the assessment, the city then, it's like they do, the bond proceeds, so then the city works with, I've got several buyers that will buy these bonds, because it's a pretty big deal. Just to give you a sense, they're municipal bonds, they're tax-free to the bondholder, in the range of six and a half to, there was one project that was just over eight percent, and it's tax-free return for the bond buyer, since mutual funds or wealthy individuals buy these bonds, knowing that they've got a long-term cash flow that's tax-free, and that's a pretty healthy return. But that's a much better price for the developers than what their sources of funds a lot of times these days are going to equity partners or, yep.
I just wanted to ask a question, 'cause it, that I asked you first off the bat. Why, why would we want to get involved in this? The large builders fund their own projects, they have the ability to do it, so why would we wanna get involved in this special district bond?
Frankly, and just listening to what you were talking about just before this, there's an imbalance in single-family homes evidently in your city, and this could create incentive to bring in some developers. I'm working with three developers right now, that there's probably somewhere in the range of five hundred homes on the properties that they could do, that they'd like to do here in West Jordan. So, but they are very interested in doing assessment bonds, it helps them take care of some financing needs, that they can take care of their vertical. This kinda takes the infrastructure, the cost of the public infrastructure off of their to-do list with the bank. A lot of banks won't fund that sort of thing. Now, a couple of larger folks, I mean, if they're doing a hundred percent cash, that's, you know, they're probably okay, I mean, but I'm working with a guy that does all cash on his stuff, and it's a pretty good-sized developer, and you know their name immediately. But they said, well, assessment bonds could help us manage the cash in the ways we build these out. So it's just, it creates flexibility for them, and it is incentive for them, and so it's a way to drive more single-family mixed-use kind of development. So the city then, so the bond proceeds, it's an interesting thing, the bond proceeds don't go to the developer directly, it goes into a trustee account, the trustee is somebody like US Bank or Zions, and as the work is done, an engineer, probably a city engineer would go out and inspect to make sure the sewer was meeting the needs of the, and then an engineer, perhaps the same one or another engineer would verify that, you know, twenty-two percent of the sewer was installed, and so then, that trustee would be instructed to release twenty-two percent of the sewer funds to pay for the sewer, so. The city collects then, once the infrastructure's in, it's being sold off, then the city collects and manages the assessment payments and delinquencies. This is the interesting thing right here, this is the main thing I wanted to talk about. In connection with these assessment bonds, the city has the right to be able to contract with other entities to take care of the assessments, because frankly, especially smaller, smaller municipalities just don't have the bodies and the knowledge on how to manage the assessments. It gets to be a hassle when there's hundreds and hundreds of lots that have assessments on them, so. So the benefits of assessment bonds encourages developers and growth, so it pays with private funds, it pays for public infrastructure, it's a municipal bond, mutual fund, or private individual that purchased these bonds, so you end up with community development, it's a lower cost in infrastructure finance, and there's a group that I'm working with right now that will save them about two million dollars to use this versus their equity partner. So, that creates some flexibility in a project that might not make sense financially, now it's making sense. So, some risks. It's high-consuming to self-manage, there's, but that can be contracted out with third parties. I'm working with municipality that's asked Utah P3 to contract and manage the assessments, creating the assessment area and managing the assessments. Something called UFA, we'll get to here in just a second, the Utah Finance Authority, that can handle this as well, the foreclosure in the case of the assessment payments and hassle, and, you know, if things, frankly, there are some risks in this. If the project isn't viable, the city's not gonna allow, hopefully the city won't allow a viable, a non-viable project, and frankly, the bondholders, the people that buy the bonds won't buy the bonds if they don't believe that the project is viable, so it needs to have land use approval by the time we sell the bonds, because bond buyers aren't gonna buy bonds on a project that's not approved for the city, so. So Utah Finance Authority, it's an interlocal agency created through the Interlocal Cooperation Act. Each member of UFA, so cities, counties, towns can join UFA, they join through an interlocal agreement, and the UFA, the members, the members manage UFA, so each member, if West Jordan were to choose to join UFA, you know, we would get the interlocal agreement over to you, you'd have your attorney table look at it, see if there's any, it's a very, very focused interlocal agreement that's frankly just allows assessment bonds and private activity bonds, things that are very good for cities to manage, it allows them to kind of off-put the management of those types of bonds to UFA. So, UFA that's set up and manages the assessment areas, holds the public meetings, do all the processes that are necessary to take care of putting the assessment bonds in place, and then managing the assessment bonds. Let's see. So really, especially for smaller municipalities, some municipalities, the very largest municipalities may have people that are full-time staff that manage the assessment areas, but some folks don't feel like they wanna spend the staff on managing, so it saves the kind of resources of the members on their staff to manage these. I think that's kind of, that ongoing disclosure, that's kind of an interesting thing on a, especially if it's sold to a mutual fund as a public offering instead of a private offering. The public offerings require quarterly, generally speaking, quarterly ongoing disclosures, a fair amount of research needs to be done on how many houses have been built, how many have been sold, how many, you know, what are all the details on it, it gets to be kind of a hassle. This can be done through a local district as well, so you could create a local district to do the assessment bonds, and that's what was done in one area. I'm actually the chairman of that local district, and I've managed those bonds from the first breath, to now we're about eighty-five percent complete on the construction, and we're starting to collect the assessments and manage that. So, UFA is not, it's not a tool to hide anything, it's, oh, thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Absolutely public process, we just have our, everything's done exactly because it's a public entity, it has to be done through the processes of public entities. The members select the UFA governing board, so the cities, their members, just manage the, let's see, UFA bonds are not an obligation of the members, so there's nothing that a member can be charged back, there's no cost to join UFA, and there's no requirement to stay with UFA, except for while a bond is being put together. Once the bond is done and sold, then a member can wait. I think that's it. If you have further questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you offline, but just wanted to give you a sense of the assessment bonds and what UFA can do, and what the value might be for your city as you're looking to grow. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just saying, let me save it.
All right. Thank you. I think Brandon would be available for questions, too. Do you have cards, by chance, Brandon?
Do you have? I'll give you.
Just leave these right here for you, so if you've got, Brandon's a real good guy, he's.
No, I don't know about that.
No, I'd say, do you know Brandon?
Yeah, I just can't think of a bunch of bonds, but I know Brandon, I know Brenda for a long time. I'm Brandon.
Brandon's a great guy. Thank you.
I think I already won, so you can review this.
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
When I know your cell phone by hard, that's pretty sad.
You know any phone number by hard and more, that's pretty sad.
I'm pretty sad.
Because now it's just like.
Oh, no, 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 I know.
I don't know anybody, I don't know anybody's phone number.
You should, what if you don't, what if you don't share?
I would, that would be a bad day.
Yeah.
Hopefully, hopefully Apple is backing everything up for me.
Yeah.
I think this next presentation's really gonna burn us out.
I don't know.
It's gonna give you heartburn.
Heartburn, these tongues.
This is gonna be a hot presentation.
It's a hot one.
I get that, and Dirk, he's rubbing it off.
More rubs.
I just don't wanna rub it the wrong way.
Yeah, they could have wiped it.
Good idea. I won't be there yet.
Hey Doug.
He does.
Can you give me your password, please?
I hear it's WJ Mobile.
You're welcome, thank you, Brendan. Hopefully I have everything in there, if not, let me know.
All right, well, thanks.
I'm gonna have to work. No. All right, guys, maybe we could do that. Let's try. J S. Sorry, guys, what are you doing? What's? Isn't that what it is, J S D guest?
Yeah.
All small case?
J S D guest, all small.
J S D guest. It's not even letting me get into that. That's weird.
The cat's pawing off.
Oh, maybe it is, let's try that. I can't tell with looking.
Hey Doug, yeah, just bring your thumb right up. We have a backup, so we can't get to the internet. I just wanna show a quick video, and then we'll get right to our PowerPoint.
Sorry.
Thank you for the opportunity to meet me for the thirty minutes I have this morning to go over a recap of the fire department's activities this last year, and then we'll go over our five green sheet requests that we have submitted as well. But before I do that, I wanna follow up on Jared Smith's presentation he done yesterday as far as risk management. Jared does a very good job of it, and I think as Marcus came on board, he's brought risk management to a different level. We have the Risk Committee, Jared attends all of our staff meetings now, and he's out in the departments, he's been to my department a couple of times, teaching our people, and it's a tough job that he has, as you seen yesterday, it's a fact, that there's risk in the fire department, the police departments, and I thought I would start my presentation off today by showing a short video, let me set this up real quick before we play the video. As Jared talked about exposure to the city and risk, there's exposure all the time. Some of it we can try to control, in some departments, unfortunately, public safety, police and fire, the exposure that we see is not always something that we can control, it's there for us, and then we go and we deal with it. On New Year's Eve this year, about five o'clock, some of you might have saw this, there was a house fire reported in West Jordan, approximately sixty-two hundred south, thirty-seven hundred west. There's four agencies within the city that responded to that, and all four of them had some sort of exposure to this call. The first one being our nine-one-one dispatch center, where, as a city, we're the second-largest contributor to VEC and that dispatch center. Without having competent people there to start an incident off, whether it's police fire, or they even call our Public Works at times, an incident can go back. The second department, obviously it's a house fire, involves the fire department. With a call for a house fire, you're gonna get a police department response to for either traffic control or whatever, but this incident, and then the last agents, the last department that responded on this call is Public Works, for, to bring a salt truck out to salt the roadways to take care of tripping hazards, because obviously we fight fire with water, water freezes in January, that causes problems. So we have four different departments within the city that responded on this call. It came in as a house fire about five o'clock PM. The details by the dispatchers that they were able to get from the nine-one-one call was, there was a suspect in the home that was violent, had a knife, and told the fire units they needed to stage. First thing, they'd done well. Otherwise, we could have had, in this incident, the fire department shows up to a fire, we go in and immediately deploy and fight the fire, we would have ran into this suspect that you're gonna see in the home. Luckily, the dispatcher got the information, PD responded with a full complement of folks to come and neutralize that person. And so I'm gonna show this video, I have to say, there is some language in it, but I think we can give these officers a break on the language when you see what they face. Maybe you've seen some of this on the news. This is a short clip, about two minutes of body camera footage that the officers had when they went in, so we'll run through that. It's a single, it's a split-entry home, the officer's in the living room area, or the garage is, and you'll see a fire burning. You'll also see that the suspect has two things in his hands. I promise you, one of them is not a fire extinguisher that was made out to be in the media, it was a blowtorch. The other one was a large knife, so. Let's let this play for, is it two minutes, Doug?
It's about, it's about two minutes.
Doug, I just don't wanna stop.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Where's the sound?
The sound is not there, because the body camera's just activated, the first thirty seconds does not get any sound.
Okay.
Fire department is staged out on the street at this point.
You can see right there, what you can't see is the guy has the blowtorch in his right hand, he was just lighting the curtains on fire. Blowtorch is still going, he has a machete in his left hand, starts.
Shit, so somebody got a fire in the house, we're getting that up, I got hazards, boy, hit the light, my home.
That's the knife.
Shit. We need more help in the house, we can't get away from, we gotta bring that fire going. I'm not fighting the military, dude.
There was the one that you saw, and then upstairs, he had started two other locations for the fire going. So when we get there, we're staged, so it's not an issue of response time for us. We can't go in until the scene is safe, and once we do go in, we're now faced with a medical problem because we have this suspect out there. Even though he's a suspect, we have priorities, life safety being first, we have to treat him, so that takes some of our resources away right at the beginning. At the end of the day, if you drove by this house today, you're gonna see it worded up, and it's a total burnout on the, from the insider home. But we have no police officers get hurt, we have no public get hurt, we have no firefighters get hurt, and I think the message is, is that there's a lot of exposure that we see. Sometimes they don't go like this, but this one did. And we had a lot of good work by a lot of different departments within the city, as I talked about, our dispatch center, our police, our fire, but also our Public Works that doesn't get enough credit to come out and salt streets and keep the scene safe for the public that comes to watch, and then all of us. I just wanted to start off with that. Any questions about any of that?
Awesome job. That was amazing.
Thank you. Okay. My presentation, I'm gonna go over a recap of our year that we've had, and then I'm gonna go through, we have five green sheets in the fire department that we've submitted, and I'll talk briefly about all of those, and they'll be a priority of how we've submitted them. A look at our stats for 2015, we had a total of almost six thousand calls, but broken out by sixteen hundred, almost seventeen hundred fire calls, forty-two hundred medical calls, with a total of two thousand one hundred and seventeen transports, meaning we don't transport everybody we go on, but on half we do. That's a five-year average, or five-year look at our calls. Twenty-fourteen, you'll see that spike in there, as we go through our data and look at that. The reason for that spike is, remember, we were rebuilding Station Fifty-four, and we moved our crews over to a UFA station while we were in that process. And so we handled some calls in UFA's area that we wouldn't normally handle. There's about two hundred and fifty to four hundred calling that. So that's the spike you see in twenty-fourteen. Otherwise, we're seeing in our medical calls, maybe it's roughly about a three percent increase in medical calls. Fire calls, actually, for structured fires that we go on, we're seeing a decrease in those.
That's because electricians are doing a better job.
It's usually electricians that cause the fire.
They don't, you know.
This is simply a breakdown of all those medical calls that we go on, and what do they become? So they get dispatched for one reason or another, whatever the caller tells us. This is what our crews find when they get there. The majority, eighteen percent of them, there's a traumatic injury. Traumatic injury covers traffic accidents, slip falls, sick person, and then the other one that we see going up all the time is this right here, psychiatric. You see a lot of that in this, an increase in that, and then that fire call that they showed you. That's a psychiatric problem. Just a snapshot of day of the week and time of day our calls come in. Thursday being busiest day, four hundred and seventy-one calls we ever is there. As far as time of day we look at, generally, nine in the morning till about ten, eleven at night is when we see the majority of our calls coming in.
Any explanation why it's Thursday?
Week's not quite over. I don't know. Don't know. This slide here, I want to talk briefly about, spend a little bit of time on, is our ambulance service fees. So we provide ambulance service. We have four ambulances in our system, and we do charge for the ambulance. If you take somebody to hospital, we send them a bill. We project every year what we perceive our ambulance fees to be, but we projected one point five million for this current budget year. Now, when we made that projection, there were two things that we didn't have answers to. One of them was, we renegotiated our contract for our ambulance billing company, and we reduced that rate from five and a half percent down to five percent. That helped some. The biggest increase, if you see here, our updated projection, which is about two hundred thousand over, was last year in the legislature, they, there was a bill on to increase the reimbursement rate on Medicaid patients. About sixteen percent of our transports that we do are Medicaid. And we were getting paid, regardless of what we done, services we provided, Medicaid pays us a hundred and forty-two dollars for an ambulance transport. That rate got increased to five hundred and fifty, got increased five hundred and fifty-four dollars, so we're getting about six hundred and ninety dollars per Medicaid transport now. That's where, that's why we're updating that projection, and we'll have that number now for next year, but that's a, that's a big increase to help offset that cost. But prior to that, briefly, don't want to get into that, the health insurance and everything, but people win insurance for helping offset the cost for the Medicaid patients that we transfer. This helps bring them more in line with what the true cost is for their benefits. The next slide, what we're talking about is our fire prevention and our public education delivery. We had about sixty-seven formal deliveries, where we came in contact with just over three thousand people. And up to the left side there is the type of contacts we had. And we want to increase that, and this is one of the green sheets that we'll talk about, is how can we increase our public education, specifically SER training, CPR training. And we'll talk about that in a minute. Our inspections, so our fire prevention bureau that does inspections, both annual inspections, I might say, which is done by our field units. So each fire station is a site in their district, certain businesses that they go in and do the annual inspections for, about three, four hundred of those in a year. The rest of these is all handled by our deputy fire marshal, Paul Brockley. And as you saw in the previous slide, as we hopefully get more new businesses coming up, new developments, that workload is going up.
So you'll do every new development coming in here, so you work with the development services?
Yes, we attend the ODA and do plan reviews for fire sprinkler systems, infested water system, and those things.
How often will an existing business get reviewed?
Once a year. When their business licenses renewed, we go and do a business inspection. Am I wrong, Lee?
Only, only if it's summer, summer required to be inspected every year. A lot of common businesses that don't fit into higher hazard classes are on every other year inspection. So part of them are every other year. Some are required by the state because of their licensure to be every year, or because they have hazardous materials. Those are all.
Okay, thanks. Good question.
Do you charge for those inspections?
We do.
Would you charge?
How much is it for you?
The smallest one for a single business is twenty-six dollars. Interestingly, years ago, we put that in to try and get more revenue towards. What the cost was, people originally complained, but the first guy I went to said, well, I pay for this thing, you better be a good inspector. And I kinda thought we had a lot of undertended consequences for this deal.
We do charge, but it's very low.
You don't inspect home businesses, do you?
No. Home daycare. Home daycare? We do. Okay, and then the last thing we've done this year, and the biggest change in our department, is with the opening of Station Fifty-four, and as we designed that, we designed some training props in for our heavy rescue team. So in January, I'm pretty sure, we moved our ladder truck and our heavy rescue team out to Station Fifty-four, and a couple of reasons for that. One is, obviously, the training props that we have there for them to use. Second, that's the industrial area of the city, and prior to building Station Fifty-four, we never had the upper, the ability to put a ladder truck out there because it wouldn't fit in the fire station. So we think that's gonna be a positive move to help, positive move in service delivery. So that happened just a couple of weeks ago. All right, the next five slides you'll see, we'll get into our green sheet items. And the first one that is a priority for us is extrication equipment. Some of you that took the Fire Ops 101 class two years ago, saw this piece of equipment right here, it is a battery-operated extrication tool. And this is some new technology. It came out last year. Those that went to that Fire Ops 101 saw it. We did not request any of that equipment in this year's budget because we wanted to wait a year to see how well it actually worked before we went to. There's a couple of reasons to go for it. This first bullet point, in twenty-fourteen, the new vehicles that are coming out, the steels that they're putting in on this ultra-high strength steel, or UHSs, our current extrication equipment will not overcome that steel. So we've had two crashes on Mountain View Highway that was going, and on Redwood Road, that our extrication equipment would not cut through the, that we were challenged with to get through. So we've put this in as a green sheet to buy a full complement of that. I've been working with Mark to see, in our budget, we've bought some other equipment that we actually got grant money to purchase. I've got some extra money. We're gonna try to buy one of these called a combi-tool that does cutting and spreading to get that in service as soon as we can, so that we don't have to wait until July to get this funded, to get the full complement. Obviously, it's important for, if you're in the vehicle, to get you out, you want to be able to cut it, but also for our employees handling the tools, trying to use a tool that doesn't work for the job ahead can cause an injury as well.
And the current tools we're covering now, did correctly come all wrong, but you've got the motor unit with the hydraulics, and then you also have all the cables.
Thank you.
The runs, so there's a lot more that can break, a lot more that gets in the way, a lot more introduction of hazards to an already dangerous scene by having the current.
Right. Our current extrication equipment that's used all across the valley, then you'll see probably going away because of this technology, but you have a power plant that's basically a small generator that pumps hydraulic fluid into the tool, and to do that, you've got to bring that equipment to where you're doing your extrication. If you're off on the side of a road, you've gotta run that equipment down. So there is, there is a downside. That plus it introduces noise into the incident, it's already chaotic. This thing here, we had an incident, the one on Redwood Road, our neighboring department to the South King, and they had one of these tools, and to see that scene and hear our guys talk about how quickly that this tool worked without, and their deployment, how fast they could deploy without having to get that power plant out, and this is good stuff that's coming down the line, and we're excited to get that. So green sheet ways, this is our first priority item that we've put in. Our next one is, I talked about public education and our fire prevention department. Right now, in our fire prevention, which is led by Chief Sharman, it's himself and Deputy Paul, our deputy fire marshal, Paul Brockley, that are tasked with doing public education and fire inspections. We've been working for, well, for me, the five years I've been in chief, one of the goals I've had is to try to increase our public education delivery, to get people to come and do SERC, and to offer CPR to the community and businesses. And the next slide I have will show at least what this project will do for us if we can implement it. So the thought process, currently, we have a captain's position that works in our logistics and takes care of scheduling fleet, buying supplies, and as we look at that position, the employee that does that does a great job. But I believe that we can, we can eliminate a captain's position and take that funding and hire fire service officers. So FSOs, if you think of them, is similar to what a CSO is. So we're trying to take lone sworn people and fit them in where they can do work that doesn't require a sworn person. I hire a firefighter right off the bat. I'm about eight thousand dollars to buy them all the safety equipment, plus their forty hours of training they have to have, and they might be doing a job that necessarily doesn't require them to have that. So what we're, what we're promoting is, through attrition, eliminate that captain's position and take that current funding and hire two full-time civilian, or fire service officers, plus a part-time one. And here's how we would, where we would deploy them. The first one, we would put a full-time to continue to do our logistics. You still have to have that order our supplies, manage our fleet. But from here down in fire prevention, to implement an education program in the schools, CPR, SERC, and a new one that we're rolling out this month that we're excited about is a scout merit badge program. For once a month, we're gonna offer the different merit badges, have scouts sign up, they'll come out to Station Fifty-four, they'll take a couple hours and teach those, those classes. And City to the north, they've been doing this for three or four years, and they're getting people that will drive from Logan to come in and do that. We're promoting it within West Jordan to businesses, the citizens, obviously, to do that, but we think the path is a good way to get people in, and then also to promote SERC at that point, is we get people into the system to teach that. So that's some of the things that those positions can do. How are we gonna deploy them? So in our, under Chief Sharman, in the prevention support services, we have the deputy fire marshal. We put one to work here as an inspector to help with those field inspections, fire flows, those kind of things. A part-time person that would float between there, logistics, and also our training division as we set up trainings, and any general errand running that has to be done to collect backboards from hospitals, to pick up our supplies, and then still continuing to do our logistics functions that we do, but instead of using a sworn captive position, we would use one of these fire service officers. To do that, everything I've showed you is a one-time cost, except this to our budget would be an increase in ongoing revenue, and that would be an increase of about thirty-six thousand dollars. A one-time cost of three thousand for some smaller office equipment and a vehicle, and then it would be an ongoing increase of thirty-five thousand dollars, but we're increasing one and a half FTEs to do. Any questions about that one? All right. Getting into another one of our green sheets is an exhaust removal system. When we built Station Fifty-four, we installed an Air Nation, it's just a brand name, but it's a filtration system that we put in the app last day where our equipment is stored that filters the air. This system uses a filter system in there that is serviced once a year, based on usage, but right now, we think once a year that these filters get changed. It scrubbed the air to take that CO out of there to keep it out of the building. We're proposing to be able to install this same system in Stations Fifty-three, Fifty-five, and Fifty-two. The last thing, not the last one, the second last one, is our, is our communication equipment. This is a project we've worked on for three years. We're taking it, we approached it, nearly ten hundred helps in all at once, you know, one by the time. So this is our third year of, you're seeing this, and you funded the last two. This will finish out us updating our digital radios from operations people. We bought some last year through some grant money. This year, the proposal we have will, excuse me, will finish out having all of our frontline equipment and employees having the, having the digital equipment to work with. The last piece of it will be in our emergency operations center, and we- And City to the north, they've been doing this for three or four years, and they're getting people that will drive from Logan to come in and do that. We're promoting it within West Jordan to businesses, the citizens, obviously, to do that. But we think the path is a good way to get people in, and then also to promote CERT at that point, is we get people into the system to teach that. So that's some of the things that those positions could do. How are we gonna deploy them? So, in our, under Chief Charman, in the prevention support services, you have the Deputy Fire Marshal. We put one to work here as an inspector to help with those field inspections, fire flows, those kind of things. A part-time person that would float between there, logistics, and also our training division as we set up trainings, and any general errand running that has to be done to collect backboards from hospitals, to pick up our supplies. And then, still continuing to do our logistics functions that we do, but instead of using a sworn captain position, we would use one of these fire service officers. To do that, everything I've showed you is a one-time cost, except this to our budget would be an increase in ongoing revenue, and that would be an increase of about thirty-six thousand dollars. A one-time cost of three thousand for some smaller office equipment and a vehicle, and then it would be an ongoing increase of thirty-five thousand dollars. But we're increasing one and a half FTEs to do. Any questions about that one? All right. Getting into another one of our green sheets is an exhaust removal system. When we built Station 54, we installed an Air Nation, it's just a brand name, but it's a filtration system that we put in the app last day where our equipment is stored, that filters the air. This system uses a filter system in there that is serviced once a year, based on usage, but right now, we think once a year that these filters get changed. It scrubbed the air to take that CO out of there to keep it out of the building. We're proposing to be able to install this same system in Stations 53, 55, and 52. The last thing, not the last one, the second last one, is our communication equipment. This is a project we've worked on for three years. We're taking it, we approached it, nearly ten years in a row at once, one by at a time. So this is our third year of, you're seeing this, and you funded the last two. This will finish out us updating our digital radios from operations people. We bought some last year through some grant money. This year, the proposal we have will finish out having all of our frontline equipment and our employees having the digital equipment to work with. The last piece of it will be in our emergency operations center, and we believe that we're gonna get that through a grant in the next year and a half. So we think this will finish us up. This won't be for neither the police have the same issue. Twenty seventeen, the analog is the date they told us, the analog goes away, and the digital, it isn't gonna be needed. Then the last one, it's a low priority, but I put it in as, I guess, as introducing the notion that, at some point, and it's driven by a few things. One is call volume. When I say call volume, what I'm really talking about is overlapping calls, meaning Station 52 is out on a call, and in 52's district, they get another call and aren't available to handle it. We monitor that, maintaining our coverage while we do required training. And then, you know, as the population increases in the city, there's, unfortunately, you have two different segments of the city, where if you look up the east side, you'll see the aging population increase there, and with that comes an increase in calls. Now, as I said earlier, we've seen just a small increase. But I put this slide in there as we start thinking about, we're gonna need some more sworn positions to fit that, to cover these overlap as they happen. When do they come in? I think we have to start looking at it in the next three to five years to do that. And it's not that we need, our stations, the way they're built and configured, is they can accommodate more pieces of equipment in them. So we're not talking about building new stations, but staffing another ambulance, instead of four, having five. So I put that in as just food for thought, and that's something we're talking about. Summary, we moved equipment to be proactive and productive as possible. We have two green sheet items, about our rescue or our radio equipment, to meet the demands of the current technology. We're trying to reduce our costs by implementing non-sworn positions where they work and where they fit. The exhaust removal system, important protecting our firefighters that work in the station and those that visit. And then lastly, whether any of these are funded, not funded, your fire department's there to deliver the best service that we can, and we appreciate all the support that we do give. We have great equipment, we have great stations. And thank you. If I can answer any questions?
I will. Great. Okay, let's do it.
I like the scout merit badge idea. Go fund that one.
Good. Did you make a promise?
I know.
All right. I don't have a PowerPoint. I hope you forgive me. You've probably seen fifteen or more by this point, so I don't have a long presentation. So I thought I'd just get up here and talk a little bit. I drew the short straw, apparently, because I get to follow fire. I haven't run into any burning buildings lately, but we do put out fires in HR. So just a quick recap of 2015. On average, for the year, we had four hundred and twenty full-time employees at the city, another hundred and eleven part-time. The majority of those are cross-dyed, so they're part-time. In last year, we filled fifty-six full-time positions. We started fifty-six new full-time employees and another fifty part-time employees. That is the second busiest year we've had. Twenty fourteen was slightly busier for us in HR. We started, we made the transition on insurance, from Altius and Sleppep over to PHP. That's gone smoothly, and very few issues that we've had to deal with, with the employees switching over, so that's been excellent. Also, as you all know, we brought back the education reimbursement and the career ladder programs at the city, and have heard very favorable responses from the employees. So it's been busy for us. The turnover rate, the annualized turnover rate for the city for full-time employees is about seven point five percent. So there's some healthy turnover, and that's a good number. You do want to see generally some turnover. You don't want it too high, obviously, and lose everyone all at once. We have had a lot of retirements, will continue to have a lot of retirements. The recessionary years basically just postponed the inevitable. People are going to retire. A lot of people just come on a little bit longer than they otherwise would. So that's the year in recap. Some of the challenges that we're facing, I believe Chief Diamond alluded to it in his presentation. But the unemployment rate nationally is very low. Nationally, we're about five percent. Utah is generally lower than the nation. We're at three point five percent for Utah. And the Salt Lake metropolitan region area, which we follow, basically the entire valley falls under that for federal statistics with unemployment, is at two point nine percent, the second lowest in the entire country. And what that means is that we are definitely at full employment, or what is considered full employment, for the Salt Lake region. That poses some challenges. So as we're recruiting, we have to get a little bit more creative than we have in the past. Some of our recruitments take a little bit longer to fill. We get fewer applicants. We've seen it not only in police, but across the board, everywhere. Every time we post a position, we're getting less applicants than we have in the past. But it's not insurmountable. There's still people that want to come here. We have a great city. We have great pay and benefits. And I guess I'll put the plug in here, we need to continue that. As council is aware, you've asked us to maintain that competitive plus advantage, three to four percent above market average for our pay. And last year, we brought some positions to your attention, to get those adjusted into the correct ranges, to get them at that level, and we will do the same again in this upcoming year. We're evaluating positions on an annual basis and bringing those forward as necessary. It's also important that you continue to fund the COLA and the STEP increases, as you know, you brought those back over the last little bit. And that does help us maintain our competitive advantage and be able to hire and retain the best employees. And then finally, with our health insurance. Health insurance costs nationally, Utah's no different, continue to increase. We have had our fair share of serious medical conditions at the city this past year. Unfortunately, we've had cancer, we've had major diseases, we've had major surgeries. And as we all know, that does contribute to the increase in premiums. So just to give you a little forewarning there, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't be seeing another increase in this year when it comes to the health insurance. We're starting that process here now, as we always do, about in January, with our brokers, with GBS. And as soon as we get the numbers back, we'll pass them on.
What would you ever give them?
We're not planning unless the insurance premiums come back very poorly, I'm going out to bid this year on our medical insurance. So generally, about the April timeframe. The insurance carriers try to wait as long as possible to try to get as much data before they give us the rates for the upcoming planned year. So we try to push them to get it sooner, they push to wait a little bit. It's generally about April.
John, I ask you a question.
Yeah.
So the medical insurance, I listened to it last year, you got me counted. I wanna compliment it with that, because it was a good experience for me.
Yeah, I appreciate your participation. You know, it did. It went well, and we got bids from a lot of companies. Thankfully, we didn't go with Arches. And you should know what's happened with Arches. They did give us a very competitive rate, but they were not selected, so we didn't have to.
But that was a really good job. I appreciate that.
We continue to try to help with the health insurance premiums. We continue to work on our wellness program at the city. We're currently doing the Biggest Loser for our employees, and just in the first two weeks of that, employees that are participating, there's about sixty-five or so, lost two hundred and eleven pounds. So we lost a full-time person.
We can decrease a bunch of it.
That's true.
Pay retirement benefits for that.
Yeah. So we hope that continues, but we continue to work on that. Finally, I did submit one green sheet this year. We did lose twenty percent of our staff. Now, when I say that, it's only one person, but we did lose twenty percent of our staff. We have three full-time HR people and one administrative assistant to help all of those four hundred and twenty full-time and a hundred and eleven part-time employees. I won't bore you with the statistics. As every other department has said, we're woefully understaffed for what we should be apt to be, to provide the service that we should and could to our employees. So I'm not asking for multiple employees, but just to replace that one that we lost, to be back to the four full-time HR professionals in the department. So with that, I got us back on track. Are there any questions, or me?
We didn't really lose anybody. We just.
Tune down to finance.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so a lot of people look at it and say, "Well, she was payroll," and so you lost payroll, and you don't have to make up for that. Payroll actually was only less than half of what she would do on a regular basis. And bringing Munis online, we've actually added more responsibilities. With the last audit, we've added some, I don't wanna say redundancy, but we've added some checks and balances into the payroll process, where HR is doing some of the entry and payroll, down in finances is processing the payroll. So we've taken on added responsibilities in that same category.
So your budget, I mean, she'll be covered on finance budget, right?
Correct.
So we're just really filling a space.
Correct. Yes, backfilling a loss in an HR position that we lost, but it's not a total loss to the city, it was just moved.
Right.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have a presentation, Julie?
Yeah.
Okay. An old-school, interactive here. Who cares? So I didn't know.
Thank you.
How many events some of the new council members have been to or know about. So these are short descriptions of everything, and we'll run over them pretty quick. This is not going to be very long, and hopefully it won't be too painful for anyone. Twenty fifteen was a busy, busy, busy year, to say the least. And we'll go over some of that. First, let's go over the events. We're gonna go over them just in the calendar order. The first thing that we've talked about before, and you've seen the check step come through, is with Comcast Cares Day. Comcast Cares Day, this will be our third year in a row. This will be our fourth year total that we've had Comcast Cares. They give us a donation for every volunteer that comes and helps. This event weighs heavily on the Parks Department, just because a lot of things that volunteers can do, planting trees, different things like that, cleaning up streetscapes, all of those kind of things. But if the other departments have things that we can have them doing, whether it's giving volunteers at the fire station, maybe one year, or different things, you know, we can try and bring that in the fold and make those things happen, so that, you know, volunteers are helping unify the city and making something of it, and really taking ownership of it and helping us along the way and saving some staff time. Couple of things, in the past, it's kind of gone both ways. Sometimes council has participated in it, and sometimes they haven't. So if you want to participate, let me know. We'll make it very inclusive for you. If you don't want to, I'm not gonna harass you, you know, to do anything. I know Mayor, in the past, you've been very generous with your time and come and help people check in and all that kind of stuff, so keep in touch, let me know.
Doug said you hand out the donuts.
He's always right on.
I would volunteer to hand out the donuts, but there would be fewer of them to hand out if it was easier.
They usually come from Denver, so they're fresh and really good. Last year, we actually, two years ago, we gave the donation to the Exchange Club, which really just put it towards the monument wall at the Sierra New World Playground. Last year, our goal was two thousand volunteers, and so we opted to work with local nonprofits and schools and to divide up the donation Comcast gave us and give it back to them, depending on the number of volunteers that they provided to help. What do you guys think? Does that work well? Do you want, you know, it's anywhere, you know, between eight thousands and seventeen thousand, and, you know, it could really be all over the place, depending on the amount of volunteers.
How many did we donate to last year?
Three. Four. So we had the Exchange Club, South Valley Services, the high school, and that may be great. And I, you know, to me, I see it as a win-win that we're able to help these nonprofit groups with money that they're helping us earn and to give back to them. I see not even.
Wonderful.
They all go back to the community.
It does. It's all entities that are in West Jordan and helping West Jordan residents.
And it's good that we know ahead of time who is going to, because I think that helps bring out more volunteers.
They have a move at farther reach and a little bit better touch on some of the people that we probably couldn't get to come and volunteer, and it's great to just bring them to the city and for them, again, to take ownership of some of this stuff and to be part of it. So, Mark, it sounds like that's a good way to go again?
Yeah.
Okay. Getting to the River Festival, this is the third year, started a couple of years ago. Jordan River Foundation Commission started this. They give each city five hundred dollars as a stipend to help put activities and do things on the river that day. They do all the promotion, the marketing. There's a lot of coordinating meetings, obviously, that go on with this that we attend. Last year, we just put together two small events. We did a Mayor's Mile with little kids running. There's about forty people that participated. The River Commission didn't promote that as much as we would like, so this year, we're probably gonna promote it ourselves, trying to get people on there. And I think Heather, I asked Heather asking, you wanted to do it again?
Oh, absolutely.
All the little kids that beat the mayor, all the little kids beat the mayor.
They want to beat me.
Yes. Received this great little.
Give me the little ones.
This great little woman who says I beat the mayor.
You may add a little extra though.
The Mayor's Mile. So one thing, one little quick story. One great thing that comes out of this is what you see in what we're teaching our kids. And one boy rode his bike, came back, dropped off his bike, ran back to get his little sister and to walk her through the finish line. So some of that stuff works really well.
I can state that that was probably the best thing I've ever done as Mayor in the two years I've been here. They were, the kids were just awesome. I hope that we have two hundred this year.
Yeah, it works out well. We also did some chalk art on the parkway. I don't know if anybody made it down to see those two graphics we had last year. This year, we've secured five artists, so we'll have five locations. They do between a four-by-four and a six-by-six space with a theme just relating to the river.
Do you have a picture of one that was done last year?
Not with me, but I can email that.
Okay. The council should see that. That was really impressive.
Yeah, so the artist took a picture of the bridge just past Gardner Village and the landscape and did that whole graphic perfectly. It was actually pretty easy. We had, we didn't have much participation, so it actually stayed there about ten days in that area. We had another lady down by the bridge, Mia, who did Robin on a branch. That was amazing. So they worked out really well. So that's coming up on Saturday, May fourteenth. Last year, they had a marathon that came through the river, the parkway. Yes, sir.
Can I ask, since we have the new town, you know, we have all that parking, what about changing the start of the Mayor's Mile? Is it the Mayor's 5K on the Ninetieth South area?
There isn't a lot of parking there on our side. That's all South Jordan, and because of the golf course and stuff, it makes it difficult.
Okay. There's a lot more traffic right there.
So we had a start and end right there, the Gardner Village Trailhead, because we had an open area with park benches and stuff where people could sit, and there were some restrooms and different things. And Gardner Village helped participate. They had, I don't remember the witch's name, but she came out on her little scooter and was entertaining the kids, and they had a bear dressed up from one of the cottages handing out fresh toffee and different things like that, chocolates, to all the kids participating.
I remember that. I was there, by the way.
Yeah. So it worked out well. Memorial Day Tribute, this has been going on since two thousand and eight. We keep in attendance between four and five hundred people. We do it in the evening. Most of the events happen in the morning, so we're able to get a few more people to attend. We generally have military speakers and state representatives. Mayor, I don't know if you're gonna be in town this year. If you wanna do the welcome or offer it to your mayor pro-town?
Chris probably better be prepared for that. Typically, I have family. I have family on that weekend.
Memorial Day, neat versus sunny. So as you know, the last five, four or five years, it's been difficult getting the military to participate. We've lost our flyovers, we've lost the Howitzers' cannons. If you, Ray Charman has an amazing picture we have posted in finance of that. With the cutbacks from the federal government and stuff, it made it tough, so they're having a rough time. So anything we can get from them, we're very grateful. We do have a lot of volunteers. We do have a lot of volunteers from the military that come and help us, and we appreciate everything that they do and everything that they help us with. Library Summer Kickoff, this is kind of tied into our Health and Safety Fair that we used to do last year. Council asked us to also roll in Meet the City. Meet the City is an event where we had an open house, basically in City Hall, and we brought that outside to the library event. So the planning department was there, the water department was there, you know, showing off what they do, how they do, why they do it, answering questions to people. Ryan was there with finance, showing people the budget, talking about business licensing. Fire department's there with apparatuses. Police have their canines do a demonstration. We have the vehicles, all of that stuff. I think, Brian, how many sapling trees did you give away?
About 100.
And flower seeds, and they really get about, every year it grows. They're anticipating this year to be more. Last year, they said they had about 7,000 people that came through that day. So it's a lot of staff time for us, seems very welcomed by the community, and everybody there really enjoys it and asks a lot of questions. And Reed has a line in his booth, and I can tell you when the canines come out that, you know, everybody surrounds them, you know, to watch it, to see how well-trained they are. And in the past, they've had the motorcycles there, and they've put small kids up there for photos and those kind of things, so it's worked out really well. So that's another great event that we have. Is everybody okay if all departments participate again? Everybody likes that? Have all of you guys been to it?
No.
I've seen Chad. I've seen Justin in the past. All right. Rodeo, nobody's heard about rodeo.
Where's that held?
Huh?
Where's that held?
Western Stampede Rodeo. It has been on an upward trajectory for several years now. Last year was our, last year on our contract with Survey Rodeo, so on this agenda, you'll see the new survey contract coming through. We did send that out for bid. We had two people send in proposals, and the committee selected Survey again because of the services and stuff that they provide and the cost. Survey is, and Mayor, you probably know most of this, they're one of the top stock contractors in the United States, not the world, but the United States, and the western United States, and what we do and how we do it. And they really helped us with the production, the showmanship, all of that, and they've taken a lot of those responsibilities for us that are helpful. This year, it's broken up because we do have a Sunday in there, so it will be a Friday, Saturday, and a Monday. So Sunday will be dark. Tickets are on sale. We actually did a Cyber Monday Ticket Blast. So our first year doing it, we sold about 65 tickets. We're okay with that. We'll start our push here coming up soon. We do have a utility manner that I put in for coming up, and on the backside will actually be the ad for the rodeo. Tickets on sale, so hopefully we'll see some of those. Last year, we had our first ever sellout, where we absolutely had absolutely no seats left. You weren't there? Don't look. Last year, we had one really close sellout. We probably had about 40 seats left, and then the 4th of July was completely packed again. And I tried to keep Reed hidden in the corner where he can't see. So we're all in good shape.
Just give him an assignment somewhere.
Well, he works for the Exchange Club, so if I keep him in the booth and it's busy, it's awesome. Independence Day Parade, two years ago, we changed the route, heading north instead of south. This helps our staging quite a bit, so as far as the layout of where the cars and getting everybody in line, all of that. With the new library, the new health department going in, that's going to change that quite a bit. We'll have to figure it out, but we still have a lot of space. And depending on the footprint that the DA's office takes up for their construction, we'll work with it and we'll make it happen. We started last year bringing in a little more fun elements to the parade, so we brought in some more characters in full costumes, things like that. They're great. We do need to give them breaks because it's, you know, the heat radiating off that asphalt at 11:00 AM in the mornings, you know, 110, 115 in those full costumes. So we did have water set up at the police sta, or the fire staging in the middle of the parade and then getting in the end. Everybody who participated in the parade, at the very end, we get donated ice cream sandwiches from Fat Boy. So we hand those out to everybody, and they seem to appreciate it after that long route and the heat. We had a problem last year with the floats coming from Murray. So in our history, Murray's parade was about the same time as ours, and then they coordinated together. Murray went earlier, we went later, and we tried to make it so that some of the floats could make it from Murray's parade and get to ours in time to be put into the lineup. Murray, I believe, has a new parade coordinator. That didn't work so well. They started late, they had a lot of breakdowns on their parade route, so everything was stopped. We had a lot of issues. We had about four or five floats come late after the rodeo had been cleared and traffic had opened up.
Oops.
That's when people stop watching, too.
Yeah, I would hope so. I think they stop watching when they see the street cleaner come by and take things away.
Scoop it up.
Yeah. City does not have a float. We had a float two years ago, moderate success. We didn't get a float last year. Our original intent, we had in the budget $7,000, a volunteer group was going to put it together, and they fell through. Didn't do a float. If we want to do a float this year, there is a range here again, Mayor. Do you have a company to do it? You guys decide.
Do you think there'd be interest in a volunteer committee putting a float together?
Well, that's what we tried two years ago, and it fell apart. Yes, I think that's a great idea. I think it's been done successfully in other places.
The ARS committee had expressed an interest in putting a float together, but with a $7,000 budget, they didn't think it would be done. And then when that information came back, the response was, well, if we want to have it done by another company, it'd be up there, too. I think it was $19,000 that was requested, and council slipped out to that. If it started with that budget, the ARS, do you want to take the same budget to do something, I'm sure that they would jump at the chance.
Or something between-
But that was kind of the discrepancy.
Now, I love a parade. I've gone to a lot of parades with my family, my kids, and that. It's not just our, we're one of the biggest parades, I believe, now. I remember going when we were just like, kids were just pulling a wagon behind themselves. Now, it's a big deal, but also there's days of '47 where all the other cities have floats, Sandy and that. So you get, I think the investment of a float is not just for our own parade, but also other parades where our staff, two years ago, I have a picture next to our float at Liberty Park. It was a good-looking float, in my opinion. Now, we could say we don't need it, but it's about branding our city still. And you're talking about probably a half million people that will see that float. That's a lot of impressions for that kind of investment. That's sought, and I'm a parade manager.
So having a volunteer group do the float as well, we need to get a chassis and have all of that prepared the correct way and have the gas tank and everything moved and different things like that. Those are all things that fleet can do, they just need the time.
I'm sure that's helpful.
Yep. Moving the park, we do. Everybody comes out without fireworks, $15,000 from budgeting to the last few years. Pioneer Pageant, the Osmonds withdrew their request this year, so it will not be happening at the West Jordan Arena. They had asked for additional money, and we said, you know, we can't really do all of the funding, and they said, well, without all of that, we just get the, it's not a moneymaker to do that, and we just don't. So the demolition derby gets about 4,200 people every year. It's pretty stable. Last year, we started being the only truck derby in the state, and that worked well. We want to continue doing that again with our contractor. The Enduro Cross, we don't have a date for that. Harman moved their date to be in the fall, about six weeks before ours, so that is pretty close, too close for comfort with that. So I'll be talking to Mark a little bit more about something that we want to continue and what we can do there. What about rentals?
Could we get Red Bull to sponsor that?
Huh?
Could we get Red Bull to sponsor that?
Red Bull?
They're doing a lot of those around cities now.
Rentals require staff support, whether it's a small, just a reservation, or people coming to the park with 500 to 3,000 people. They require staff support and a lot of additional city services that come from police, fire, and parks generally, sometimes from engineers. Show how busy we were. Last year, I worked 31 days with only three days off in that timeframe. 14 of 26 Saturdays, just over half the Saturdays in Veterans Memorial Park, had a large rental or an event in it. 10 out of that 14 were 5K runs coming around the park, which also, generally, they want to close the park road so they can run on the park road, limiting access to the park. Soccer tournaments decreased from seven to three for policy changes. The Mexican rodeos increased to four last year. Whoops. Three of the four of those were on Sundays, one of them was on a Saturday. I had three requests the end of 2015 that we put on hold for the noise issues, and I've had two requests so far this year. Reservations, Constitution Park, 340 field reservations, 33 pavilions, Romwood, 394 fields, Utah Sports Complex, 792 fields, Veterans Memorial Park, 120 pavilion reservations. They have the two pavilions and 626 field reservations. That includes the Quomby, Gene Fulmer, and Forza Rec, we put many fields out there in just the open grass space for them. Pioneer Hall, in the calendar year last year, we had 299 reservations. The West Jordan Arena, we have a few riding groups. We have two four-H groups that ride in the arena, the Silverados and the Renegades, and the Salt Lake County Sheriff's Posse practice out there. So, and we work some more on that sound policy for the arena, how we want to hear that moving forward. So as you move past all of this, Melanie's going to ask you, and you're going to talk about committees, and which committee you want to be a part of, all those kind of things. I just want to remind everybody that volunteers are unpaid employees. They need to know our policies, procedures, and they need you or they need staff at those meetings to help them move through this. The last couple of years, we have had some issues that have been, you know, taken up to the attorney's office and the police department. They just need somebody there to help them and to answer questions and to be a part of it. Some of these committees, they have their best of intentions, but they just don't know. Recruiting volunteers, different things, you know, it takes a lot of care, feeding, all of that kind of stuff, and resources for the committees, what they're looking for, and what you're wanting them to do, and you're their bosses, to help them out. Any questions?
Julie?
Yes, sir.
So last year, you asked us for additional staff to grow our event, so are you still wanting that?
Oh, please.
These offices not enough?
Just so the new city managers are aware.
I was a tad bit argry at the end of that.
You?
Definitely.
Because, you know, I haven't had a department head yet.
It's for our community, really, sees that we're a city.
Yeah.
Anyway, I've-
I have two things.
One is, I would like a bid to go out for Carnival again this year for the 4th of July. I've had no less than 200 phone calls about why we don't do the Carnival anymore. We may or may not approve it once we get the bids in, but I'd like it under the same parameters that we-
Last year's.
Sent it out last year.
Yep.
And then the other thing is, in order to get the floats to come to our parade, is there a competition that we could offer a cash and get a private company to donate the cash so that we, the floats want to come to us rather than Murray? That's the other complaint that I've heard, is we don't have floats in our parade. Everywhere else has floats.
Here's where their decision comes from. Their thinking is that we can hit two parades, one right after the other, and that will be great. And normally, it works out pretty well. We usually get about 12 to 15 floats in a parade throughout the end coming from Murray, and we get them in. When Murray has a problem, because they want to hit the Murray one first, they come to ours.
But wouldn't they come to ours if they had a chance of making $2,000 for winning grand prize?
Absolutely. Money will talk.
They'd come to ours and forget Murray, wouldn't they?
I don't know that, but I can guarantee, you know, that would help.
Yeah, that's the only complaint. I mean, every, we had like 50,000 people there last year was the estimate, stacked six and seven deep, has been that way for about 10 years, I think. Sometimes higher, depending on the weather, but that's the only complaint in the whole parade I've ever heard is.
And I don't know if anybody, Mayor, I don't know if you were there and saw the very beginning of the flag ceremony that the military did for us at the end of the parade, but it just brought chills to you. They worked with our police department, the motors, and the salutes and all that. It was really, really well done.
Do we get a fly-by, like guard or first officer after the last two years?
Maybe a couple of drones?
We have, we have, oh, it's fast.
Yes, they have. It's, we can't even try to pull political strings, you know, with our congressman status, it's just become difficult to spread those things.
I'd like to see our 4th of July become bigger. I grew up going to Provo's 4th of July parade and 4th of July events. I mean, they have the governor and the senators, and they're all riding their parade. Why aren't they riding our parade?
Because we're there.
Right. Although, we tend to, but I think you come here after. You know, so I'm just, I'd like to see our parade, our celebration on the 4th of July become the place to be in the Salt Lake Valley. Provo can have Utah, but we'll take Salt Lake Valley.
But, you know, for, I mean, we have had the IP's come from Memorial, and a lot of different, I mean, it's not like they ignore us.
Sure. We have voters, too. That's right.
It's just a matter of, do we want them to drive down the route? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Whatever.
Julie?
Let's invite the governor.
For the sound on the arena, I plan to propose something at the city council meeting in February, so-
Okay.
I'll be working with you prior stats, we can get some information together.
That would be great. And then if you'll just, any documentation, if you'll share with Mark?
Very good.
That'll be terrific.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, let's take 10.
10 what? 10 bullets?
I don't want to be seen. I know I got the heat on too hot.
I don't think so.
Really?
You're wearing your life.
Like Sweden festival?
Yes.
I'll do a Sweden festival, and we'll have some.
Yeah.
You're always tripping.
I just wanted to make sure it's the same festival.
I didn't mark anything because I'm not a Jimmy John's fan.
I'm not a Jimmy John's-
I'll sneak across the street, buddy.
Are you sure?
I don't know about the songs from yesterday. I'll go buy me a Subway sandwich. Albert, I do like the chocolate and cookies. Okay.
You are the team.
We have two new members to the council, so may or may not know about the committee assignments, but Melanie has sent them-
I emailed the document to all of you.
To everyone.
Oh, what's this now?
Did you have about when Julie was doing her presentation?
Okay. I know over the last year, we have had some council members brought to their committees, and now would be the time to discuss committee assignments.
Does everybody have access to it, or do you want me to?
Look, I'm pulling up it now.
I could, I can see if I can email it to one of the people here in the parade.
Pull it up on the screen.
Be this way out there.
Don't be so smart.
Yeah, if you do, that would be great. See, I don't have a VGA connection to my surface, so if you have one yours, then we're still in your computer.
Who's volunteering this computer? They're all on paper scissors.
Yeah.
So, Chris is the main?
I mean, it's very important to have that one, so...
Let me see how many pushups Chris can do.
Is anyone else interested in that, besides council member? What's that name?
I'll just be his alternate.
Okay, so, let's make that change.
Okay.
Also, and then I'll be unable to make the Chamber of Commerce, I would, I served on that committee for nine years, over that committee, as a council member, and I would open that up to someone to take that over.
What's the time coming in or the schedule for it?
I believe they...
Are you talking about both of them up there?
Yeah.
The business and the government action?
I don't really know what, the business to education council was, but the government action committee.
I'll take the government action one.
Okay, do you want your government action?
Yeah. What was the other one up there?
The other one is Business to Education Council. Javine's here, if you guys have questions about it.
Who do you want on there, Javine?
No, no, I have a question. Tell us about it, Bill, what is Business Education?
This is a military committee, it's run by Steve Whitefield from Cypress Credit Union, and we work with the school district, the Jordan Foundation, and all the, some of the principals, and different representatives from the school district, to build, we're doing a lot with our website this year, we're getting a new website, so to provide resources for students, and educators, and administrators, and the business community tying it all together. So, we're producing videos and such for these, for kids to be able to see what business owners are looking for, and how to interview, and all kinds of different educational pieces that they need to know, what we into a profession, what's expected of them, from horses and alpines, and they meet on the same day, so the Fourth Wednesday, so both meetings are on the Fourth Wednesday, PC is at 12:30, so the lunch meet over at Jordan Valley Medical Center, and to great with the people, it's really successful. Government Action meets at Jim's Restaurant at 7:30 a.m. on the Fourth Wednesday. You buy your own breakfast, I've all been to it, different representatives, we hear from all the different entities that are there, Mayor, the Water Conservancy District, what's going on, just some of our representatives cover that. And then we also have the board meeting, in our bylaws, it has space for, you know, someone from council. That is the second parade at 7:30 a.m. at Jim's. 7:30.
Historically, this last year, I was the Government Actions and Economic Development Council alternate. I'd be happy to, I mean, Dirk mentioned he'd like to do that, I'd be happy to continue serving as an alternate, just let me know when you can't do, I'll do what I can, or if somebody else wants that alternate slot, I can, I'll yield it to somebody if they'd like to try it.
I often go to that one anyway, so if you want to be the main one, I could be the alternate, then we'll have two of us there.
But generally speaking, I'm not available that day, so you'd have to let me know and I can make arrangements, so, that's why I really don't want the primary.
The only thing I'd state on that is, we used to, for at least eight years, we used to get all of the representatives, both federal and state representatives.
From county?
Senators, representative from the county, and our local businesses, and over the last couple of years, as I've been there, I have been there for this year, but we've had none of them.
I think it was been here this year.
We have none of them attending, so if, if you're going to take that on, I'd like to get it back to where we're getting those representatives, at the federal level, the state level, the county level.
Well, I agree, because the meeting isn't very productive without them.
It doesn't just happen to breakfast, is all I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, anyway, thanks for taking that on.
Okay, so, just a quick, go ahead, sorry.
I was going to say, I wouldn't mind being on the board.
Board, just the regular board.
Board.
Not to be boring, but...
Oh, the chamber board?
The chamber board, yeah. If there's, if there's nobody else who's interested in that, that's definitely...
Is that a position that we have open?
Yes.
Well, the bylaws of the chamber, because Dirk and I are both chair, chairperson, says that it's the city manager, manager, or an, or mayor appointee, so I don't know if it...
Yeah, I'll be glad to allow...
To be...
Okay.
And I'd say he's going to be on the board.
Okay, so West Jordan Board is going to be Zach, or Zach?
Board, yeah.
Yeah, put Zach on the board.
Okay. And then I had Government Action, Dirk is the main, and Chad the alternate?
Yes.
Correct.
And then are you doing the business education?
No. I wasn't planning on, lunch meetings are harder for me to get to than breakfast meetings.
Yes, unless anyone else wants to take that on as the committee liaison, I'd like to take that now that that's vacant.
As the main?
I would like to be alternate, but I don't want to be the main, I'd like to be alternate.
Mayor, I'd love to see you on there, because that's a timetable, and I don't want to be affected with that, so...
Mayor, do you have the cowboy boots?
Yeah, I, so, you're going to be the alternate?
I'd like to be alternate for that one.
You can do it, then.
That's one of the few I haven't touched for the last four years, so I'd like to be alternate.
I think we still got some room improvement, we've made vast improvements there, but I think we should...
You're not missing money?
You know, actually, I never saw it as a, as a money maker, I'd like to get it to work at great evil, every year.
Last couple of years, we've done, it was quite even.
Really close, yeah, well, we can do a little better than what we've done. But, I'll state that, since we raised the purse for each of the events, we've got the cowboys that, we have ranked, nationally ranked cowboys, anyway, I'll take that, and Chris is the, that's all the rest, I have to be on the rest of them, so, and I'm happy to do it.
Okay, so then, let me just verify, so we've got, under Mayor's name, currently, we have Company West Jordan, that's going to move to Chris, and Jeff's the alternate, the Stampede, Mayor's going to be the main, Chris the alternate, Chamber of Commerce, Business Education, I'll remove that from there. Who, anybody?
Nobody's taken that.
Just if you can, I guess. Okay, Government Action, I have Dirk, and Chad is the alternate, so I'll remove it from the Mayor's, and the rest of them, Economic Development, Western Grove, Salt Lake County, the rest stay on yours, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Should we, are we, the Executive Budget Committee, do we take that off, do we still have it?
We don't really have it, but I'm hoping that...
Just leave it for now?
Yeah, I mean, if it comes back, it's still, sure.
Well, see, I'd like to bring that back, because it went away for a year, I think, Chris and I, you and I were on that first year. Are you interested in that?
It was a little bit weird, though, because we have the Budget Committee, and we have the Sustainability Committee, and there were folks from the Sustainability who wanted to work and have input to the city's final budget, so we created the Executive Budget Committee, and then merged Sustainability and Budget. I think...
Budget and the Executive Budget Committee were different?
Yes.
Yeah, and that's because there were folks on Sustainability who wanted to be involved. So, I would like to officially sanction City Committee, and just sort of...
It was created through...
An ad hoc committee?
Right.
Created by citizens?
Right.
I would like to see that committee reinstated this year.
Well, I would say, you guys would work hard, because it was more of a city manager...
The Executive Budget Committee was a city manager committee.
Right.
Rick Davis created that committee.
Right.
It's an ad hoc committee, it would be entitled at the mark to do that, or the council to create it again formally through ordinance.
I think the way I'd like to see it is, if they put the budget together, and you have that blank sign, determine between the appropriations request and my, you know, balance budget, then they can weigh in on that and help to make your decisions, I'd rather do it that way.
So, should we just leave it up to when you monitor them?
Yeah, well, I'm going to get that yellow one and a half, and then that committee then can help you look at it.
Since it's not a committee sanctioned by ordinance, I would almost think that we should remove it, since the mayor's not officially assigned to that.
Councilmember Hagan?
So, it's taken me two years to understand the youth committee, and I actually want to keep on that, because I've connected with Joint School District, and a lot of cities have youth committees, and it, and they coordinate with the Utah League of Cities and Towns, and actually go up on the Hill and debate legislators and that, so I'd like to still continue to foster that with the district, so, unless there's somebody else interested in it. I didn't really understand it when I first was assigned to it, that I do now, that setting it up requires the school district cooperation, so... Unless there's somebody interested, and then I'll, I'll be the alternate again with Healthy West Jordan, with our Association. See, I don't know how I became on the R, so youth committee really is a different...
And this was as of September, this list, so that's the most recent one I have, that our link has, I should say. So, we can move everything on?
I understand that's a huge difference, because it was myself and Justin, and then myself and Sophie, and I think with youth theater, there may have been a disconnect in writing stuff down, youth theater became arts.
Yeah, that was really the youth committee, and you resigned, right?
Yeah, I was on the youth theater committee, which is wholly different than what a youth committee is, as far as other municipalities, so...
So, that still needs, council leaders on to be with that, because...
But I'd like to continue working with the district on the youth committee.
So, you want to pull your resignation and keep that, Ben?
So, youth theater is a subcommittee of the youth committee, no...
Oh, that's right, it's a subcommittee.
They can be under arts, but...
That's right, they put it under youth.
Yeah, so youth committee, underneath which is youth theater.
So, it's not part of the arts council?
No.
No, it's arranged.
The youth theater, no, which has caused all kinds of problems, you know, back half a decade, to when there were clashes between what the youth theater wanted to do and what performing arts wanted to do, and they kind of split, and by ordinance, it's not.
Mayor, can I come back and give a presentation to the council during, on the youth committee? You know, because I've, I've sat down with Draper, how they do theirs, and Sandy, and if, if the council wants to break that apart as a separate entity, that's what I'd kind of like to do, rather than being to the youth theater. Can I bring it back as a presentation and get approval of the council body, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, bring it, I mean, I want to keep it on the agenda. Okay. It's not functioning now.
Yeah. So, I don't want it to be erased, or...
I'll save it after now.
All right. Now, I'll be alternate, Sister City, I think I was alternate for Chad, I still be willing to do that. Are you active in that, Chad?
Yeah, whenever they had a meeting.
Do we really have a functioning Sister City committee?
Yeah, it's just an as needed, they don't regulate any, and in fact, most recent action we took was, what, about a year and a half, two years ago, and we created this second.
Oh.
We were trying to attract some of that, some presence in Brazil, so we were trying to, to work out some arrangements there, so the council formally agreed to go ahead and accept it, we haven't, don't have a foreign city that I know of yet, but at least the council accepted the idea and the concept of going down that road.
So, yeah, if that's still functioning, I'll support you as an alternate.
So, are you the alternate or Chad?
No, well, it's up to him now.
Well, I'm still on the committee, I'm happy to serve on there, unless someone really has the drive to serve on that thing.
So, you're the main, okay.
And it's just, it's literally an as needed, they'll call probably two, three, maybe four meetings a year.
I don't know if I was ever, I've never been to that Sustainability Committee, but I'd maybe, maybe more.
I was going to say, I'd like to be an alternate on this one, it was myself and Judy, Judy was the primary, and I was alternate.
This is my most current.
Yeah, you're still showing as alternate, probably half the council's showing as alternate on that one.
Yeah, I'd like to, okay.
However, for the last six months, we haven't had any council.
So, the last two, with Western Grove Coalition, I'd still like to be a liaison with that, I'm actually a member of that, because I was a founding member, so if the council's okay with that. Then on COG, I would, I'd actually like to be the second vote of the COG.
I would as well.
I wouldn't mind being on either, six years in the council, I haven't had that chance yet.
I'd like to be on there, too, but I won't say, you got it.
I would, never mind, I would like to see what you guys do with that, so, this will be fun.
Yeah, I might show up to a meeting and try to do that.
Five, five members? Anyone's welcome to be there at any time, as we are a member of COG. Does a mayor have to be?
Yeah, it's a mayor position.
Who is the alternate now, has been Sophie?
I'm the alternate, I was only on it like this night.
See, this position, let me just tell you, I mean, this is the county council of governments, where we actually are one of three cities that have two votes, and, you know, we have the opportunity, I think, with the mayor, and I think I would be better served to coordinate that vote to where we can have influence on the county, and, you know, I'm going to go anyway, I've already, I go whether I vote or not, I'm part of the committee, all of us are as council members, it's just a matter of, do we want to utilize our vote as a team, rather than having division, because in the past two years, you know, a councilman will be over here, and the mayor will be over here, we should be as a, go as a team with our city manager, and so I would, just kind of my two sounds, I'd like to be the member...
Sounds like on that one, we have several members, we'll have to have that agendized, and we'll have to have a, that one we'll have to...
Make decisions, okay?
So, we'll leave that one blank.
For the alternate, okay?
Yeah. Where are we on this one?
How did that process work?
Okay, so, let me go over to Councilmember Hagan, then, youth committee, you're still the main one, arts council, you're the alternate, an alternate? Healthy West Jordan, an alternate?
Chris is the Western Stampede Committee alternate, then we'll...
Right, so we'll take, right, Chris is the Western Stampede alternate.
Can I, can I pause you for a second, quick, me up? So, I think Zach made the comment about not having representation in the North City Council Sustainability for a while now, I think some of that...
So the last two, Western Grove Coalition, I'd still like to be a liaison with that. I'm actually a member of that because I was a founding member. So if the council's okay with that. But on COG, I would, I'd actually like to be the second vote of the COG.
I would as well.
I wouldn't mind being on either. Six years in the council, I haven't had that chance yet.
I'd like to be on there too, but I won't say. You got it.
I would, never mind. I would like to see what you guys do with that, so this will be fun.
Yeah, I might show up to a meeting and try to do that.
Five members. Anyone's welcome to be there at any time because we are a member of COG. Does the mayor have to be?
Yeah, it's a mayor position.
Who is the alternate now has been Sophie.
I'm the alternate. I was only on it when I was nine.
See, this position, let me just tell you, I mean, this is the county council of governments where we actually are one of three cities that have two votes. And, you know, we have the opportunity, I think, with the mayor. And I think I would be better served to coordinate that vote to where we can have influence on the county. And, you know, I'm gonna go anyway. I've already, I go whether I vote or not. I'm part of the committee. All of us are as council members. It's just a matter of do we want to utilize our vote as a team rather than having division? Because in the past two years, you know, a councilman will be over here and the mayor will be over here. We should be as a, go as a team with our city manager. And so I would, just kind of my two sounds, I'd like to be the member-
Sounds like on that one, we have several members. We'll have to have that agendized. And we'll have to have a, that one we'll have to- So we'll leave that one blank.
For the alternate, okay.
Where are we on this one?
How did that process work?
Okay, so let me go over Councilmember Hagan's then. Youth Committee, you're still the main one. Arts Council, you're the alternate. An alternate. Healthy West Jordan, an alternate.
Chris is the Western Stampede Committee alternate down there.
Right, so we'll take, right. Chris is the Western Stampede alternate.
Can I pause it for a second to pick me up? So I think Zach made the comment about not having representation in the North City Council Sustainability for a while now. I think some of that might come because of the number of alternates that we have. I know that there were a number of times where it was thought that, okay, we're gonna have two council members there already, so let's not make it a third. So I didn't go thinking the other two are gonna be there. Do we want to limit the number of alternates so that that way we've got the primary, we've got the alternative. If the alternative can't make it, they can call somebody else ad hoc and coordinate, but that way we're not all-
Not assuming that there's somebody else there?
Alternate A, alternate B.
The three can go. So if we wanted to have the main position and two alternates, I think that's bad.
But I think it's incumbent upon the main person, if they're not going, to get a hold of an alternate.
To get them to somebody else.
I agree. It's like a substitute primary. That's me. I'm the substitute.
We'll just watch the number of alternates.
There are quite a few. Like you and Ben and-
You and Rick.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will. I can't on that. No, I'm making a mistake.
And that came back from when we merged the budget committee and the sustainability committee?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Well, employee discharge has to be planned by a resolution, so we'll have to change that.
Okay, sorry, dude.
No, you're quick. You're quick.
I'm done, darling.
You're quick. Okay, so Councilmember Hagan, which ones do you want me to remove off yours? That's the easier question.
The Stampede.
Okay.
The events, the Western events.
Okay.
Appeals.
Okay.
The pending marks. And I'm Western Grove. I'll be on.
Okay.
I told you I'd have to go on the COG.
Okay.
The COG is gonna be agendized. So the appeals board does not appeal to you?
Okay, so we have, so you have you. Sister City, alternate? Sustainability?
No.
You're not on the sustainability, is not?
Still has Healthy West Jordan, so it's alternate.
Right. Healthy West Jordan, okay.
You can try out about half of that.
Okay, okay. Right outside. Okay. Okay, now, we'll get Chad. Do we still want to start for Fisher?
Yes.
Find him, yes?
Yes, it's essentially postponed. We have no meetings in this year. It's still-
As needed, like Sister City.
It was deflated with the Sugar Factory disappeared. They've not held a meeting since. And so, I-
So there is no meeting?
If there are members, it's just there are no meetings.
So we're still on our toes.
But it's actually obligated, I believe, by state statute to have historic preservation committee, mission, and planning purposes. That was Tom Verdet's stance. I don't know if that's still in place, but he always indicated that. So we just kept it on the books. Essentially, that's why it's there. If somebody else wants to take that and try to resurrect it, they're welcome to. I'm happy to go if they ever hold a meeting. At this point, we just have it on the books.
We listed this for sites and-
They, the committee itself was working on some sites like that, I believe, so we're still on the national list. I think all the national lists are. And the only one that they were working on was the Sugar Factory.
Is it Pioneer Hall on the national list?
Pioneer Hall was definitely a third building, it's not official. Anyway, it's there and I believe we're obligated, you know, by state statute to have that. But, you know, if somebody wants to jump up, they're welcome to. I haven't put me in the alderman. I do have an interest in historic, historical matters. I'm the guy who's always the geeky cemetery guy. I'm always interested in history and our ancestors, so.
He's still status and wants some proof.
Yeah.
He said we don't dig anymore.
I don't.
He's still a true, but he's lost and passionate generation. He won't act as himself, so.
He's an unentitled discus for a site. I mean, I'd be happy to lead one of the aldermen's staff.
So Chris, people, let him start?
Yep.
And you're the alternate.
Sister City, we talked about. Western Stampede, you can move it and have Chris basically the alternate. Still continues the alternate, the Chamber of Commerce. Still serving on the board. I do have an interesting thought I wanted to bring up with the council on that. Just like when you were telling me. I think it's about time for West Jordan, not through any kind of force or anything, but I think we start raising the issue into we warrant us having an extra representation on the board. The communities consist of Jordan Valley Water Board, primarily West Jordan River. West Valley, the harem. West Valley is the only community that has two members on that board. But our size is now competing at a level where we're comparable. At least near it.
And it's just-
And West Valley doesn't produce anyone. They have great other group. But it's technically that's who is all the country, but they have representatives on board who didn't succeed. And so, anyway, I, it's not, I want to go up there and see if we've got to do this for us, but I'd like to still start thinking in that direction. All of the communities have, like Harriman, Riverton, Wacko, have one representative on the board. But even those three populations combined, they're still not able to create a good West Jordan. And so I'd just like to see them equalize that a little bit as we move down the order. I brought that up with Mark yesterday. So it's just a thought out there.
I'm gonna write a letter to him this week if the council approves and ask for that.
Do we need the first-class city?
Mayor?
Do we need a part of that? Board member on which agenda to for resolution approval?
What's that?
For Jordan River?
Jordan Valley Water.
That has a term applied by the governor?
It's applied by the governor.
It has a specific term?
The board, the only role the council has is providing recommendations of who they want to provide recommendations to the governor.
And when is our cities a term?
Two years. And the option they would give, in fact, it's interesting, what West Valley did for their two appointments this last year, since they have two seats. For seat number one, they appointed, or they recommended the two individuals. And for seat number two, they recommended the same two individuals. But essentially, they assured who was gonna give the governor an appointment. Of course, the governor can always go outside the recommendations, but in this case, he followed.
Well, not likely.
That's enough of that, but I think a letter would be more than appropriate, just a gentle saying, hey, we'd like to have some representation. Even if it means they expand the board from nine to eleven members to accommodate that. I think that'd be wise. If that happened this week, this last week.
No objection.
Okay, are you still alternate for the Western Grove Coalition?
Our Western Grove Coalition, are they still meeting on Mondays?
Yes, they are. Except for this month and next month, they meet on Saturday mornings.
And except for Saturdays?
With the Western Grove, right? Yes.
I'm fine continuing as the alternate if somebody else would like it, they're welcome to. But I've served as the alderman.
When do they, when do they meet regularly? Mondays at when? Mondays at four.
Four.
PM.
Once a month.
Yeah.
Those are hard for me. It's in the middle of the day.
The third Monday at four. The fourth Monday at three.
The end of the middle of the day.
Never mind.
The fleet management, I've continued serving on there. It's a valuable experience. I'll continue serving. If anybody would like it, I'm happy to let them have that opportunity.
What do you do?
It's an advisory board, mostly comprised of city staff. You're the only council leader, you're the only president. And you will be asked from time to time what you might think the council will support, but at the same time, you just, you can't commit to that. So it's just an idea of providing some thoughts on direction and bringing it back to the council. If anything that needs council opinion.
How often and when do they meet?
It's as needed. I'd say last year was five meetings, maybe six. And they, last year, they were very accommodating to my schedule. But I asked them that they schedule on council days, council meeting days in the afternoon. So they have the three or four block on Wednesday. I was to accommodate my schedule, so.
I'm happy with you there.
Does I have an alternate?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I can alter.
I think Judy may have been.
Yeah, Judy's here, Judy.
Because I think she went on the ones.
I would like to step in that. A broad mind, I've had the full four years, so it sounds like I'm grabbing anything because I am second to. Others I've got, but if there's another, there's. Yeah, I would run second now.
As the main?
Or-
I wouldn't mind being an alternate for that one. So if you want the main, I'll take alternate for it.
Chris is the main.
Well, Chad, do you want to keep that one for?
I'm happy to continue serving what you want. I'm happy, will be.
Happy, happy, happy.
Exactly.
A couple of meetings like that, like, of course, it's actually really nice to hear staff as they're talking about the needs. One would say, yes, we need this, we need two of this eight hundred thousand dollar truck. And you hear other staff saying, really, no, you can't go back and close that because then everything else gets torpedoed. And watching staff like that, because so often it's like, feels like we're just sitting here listening to people ask for money, ask for resources. And it gives you a really nice perspective to see what happens before.
This is who's, who's the, it's the Western Valley.
Proche.
Dan Proche, is his name right? So we got Dan Proche, let me just get it.
Oh, it's still gonna be, I'll just miss it.
There you go. Yeah, I think, I think Wednesday's with our council meeting fits well for me, so hopefully do it like a four hours session.
For me, it's just- The taxing, you got all that, Billy?
Yeah.
Taxing Entity Committee is a two-member post. I would love to be serving on their duty with the others.
I would like to as well. That's one that I-
That's an as needed.
That's as needed and also planned by a resolution, so Zach can-
If nobody else wants it, yeah. That's one that I kind of have my eye on.
That's where we meet with the members of all the taxing entities, from the CDAs and the council and the formalizing.
The school and the-
Give the school board, the state school board.
The county that wants to create CDAs because they don't want to take part.
I think right at point fifteen, I think we met once.
Yeah.
It's not very often.
We might meet again because of the CDA that we just created on Ninety, but then we also heard-
Senator Harper.
Senator Harper, they're changing it to where we don't have to use the taxing entity as an alternate. But until that time, we need to do that.
Jordan River Restoration Project, this one actually technically, now I just left my mind, has a technical name. It's not that. It's not, yeah, the Big Bend River Project, that's exactly what it is. So it's really the Big Bend, you can call it Jordan River Restoration, but it's the Big Bend. You can call it Big Bend River Restoration Project. That's what we work with the National Park Service.
And you're still on it?
Yeah, I continue to serve on that. We just meet a couple of times a year.
Do you have an alternate on that one?
I don't have an alternate. Yeah. Definitely not.
I'd love to be involved with that because that's-
Would you like Jordan River Commission?
What was that?
Would you like Jordan River Commission as part of it? We can get that weird out.
Zach, you mean the alternate, Chris? Something's offered, you know.
Oh, she is the alternate.
Okay, so Chad, we have Historic Preservation, you need her name. Historic Preservation, Sister City.
Historic Preservation should be all of it, Chris.
Is that what you said, all of it?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see, I've got somebody else. Okay, alternate, yes. Sister City for removing the Western Stampede. The Chamber of Commerce, you're going to stay as an alternate. Jordan Valley Water, you're staying on and then we're gonna possibly expand it to an appointment, correct? Western Grove Coalition, an alternate. Remove fleet management, I'm going to give it to Chris. Remain taxing entity and the Big Bend River Restoration Project.
You said Big Bend, didn't you?
They will be actually doing.
This project's actually moving. I have a rather nice little-
It's not a restoration at all. It's a-
You might actually see something in one of those five groups or so.
Restoring people going to the river.
Okay. So.
There you go.
We're now, and I've changed Ben Southmore's name to Zach.
I'll tell him. He'll be, he'll be excited to hear that.
So far, I have, okay, so you're wanting to be the taxing entity committee, which we will have to apply resolution, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Looks like there's alternates.
And then I have an alternate as the sustainability committee. He got rid of a lot of his committee frustrating because he was-
Yeah.
And the only other one I have you down here that you've already mentioned is the fleet. You want to be alternate.
Yeah, and chamber board.
Oh, that's right, as a chamber board member.
It would be really nice if you should know, right?
Yes.
Like this, they just have a committee.
Yes.
Primary results, and a detail.
Yes. I'm gonna recommend that to our new executive assistant. It's easier to read and understand.
Slide in and slide out.
Yeah. Okay.
Well done, sir. I wouldn't mind being alternate on sustainability.
Okay, so stay with Ben was, then?
Yeah. I mean, I've been going to that committee for a long time anyway, but I don't want to keep going if I don't have to necessarily. So alternate's nice middle ground.
Okay, and the fleet, I'd have you as an alternate.
Yep. And I may grab some others from other people here as they-
Fleet board, okay.
Maybe we should go back, probably review everybody's.
Yeah. Okay. And Judy is now Derek.
We should call her and tell her. She'll be shocked.
Yeah, I'm sure she will.
Derek, do you feel comfortable with all of them?
Well, the sustainability committee is already taken by Chad, right?
I could tell you that the taxing entity committee is a big one.
Who took Sustainability's name?
Who's the main of Sustainability?
Anybody yet? I don't think anybody has yet.
I was not stating it as the main one, no.
I don't think anybody has taken it.
Judy was.
It's Thursday night, it's like you don't do it.
Thursday night at seven? Clear any directions?
This is the one where I'm wondering, how many alternates do we have? Judy, I was an alternate.
You were Ben was and Jeff was last year.
Chad was an alternate?
Yeah, that's, that's why a lot of us stopped going.
Ben was an alternate?
We got a couple of them.
Oh, and Chris was an alternate. We had three alternates and Judy was three.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
That's why we got a couple.
That's, I think it's because when the budget and sustainability merged, we had-
Oh, you're right. You're right.
We had budget committee assignments and sustainability assignments.
Okay, who wants to be the main and who wants to be the alternate?
I'd like to be the main as an alternate.
Chad will be the main.
I'll give it to you. I don't need to be an alternate.
You're the main and you're the alternate.
Sorry.
Chad's the alternate. Chad's main, you're alternate.
Dave's main, you're alternate. I'm confused. Please.
You're melody.
I'm trying to go back and do it together like this.
Oh, yes.
You're doing good.
Want me to come do it? No, you're doing a job. I'm not saying you're not doing it. I just feel bad that you're doing it. You shouldn't have to do it. That's what I meant. It's not your job to do. It's mine.
Yeah, I'm done.
That's easier.
I just need to speed it up just a little bit because the most important part of this two days is coming, so. In fact, it might go quicker if we just look at a list of all the committees and rather than say who have what, try to hear about-
Well, let's, how about we-
Let's look at both.
Yeah, why don't we just go there and see if I raise a hand, who wants it?
The primary and then go down on this, the alternate. That's easiest. So I show Chris as the Arts Council main. And I also have Sophie as the Arts Council main.
Rock procedures.
So, and I have Jeff as the alternate, but he didn't want to do it anymore. So one of you main, one of you alternate.
Yeah, and I've been with them for four years, so I would like to give some of those alternatives to you.
So Sophie, main, and you alternate. When do they, when does?
Yes, this is my view.
First Thursday each month, seven PM, or six, six thirty.
But I'm still discussing what time they want to do.
They're talking about six and then they said that's too early and six thirty might be.
Yeah.
First Thursday each month.
I would that shake out maybe next year.
So you have all of- So, you have all of the arts groups, with the exception of the youth theaters. You've got performing arts, you've got literary arts, visual arts, you've got choir, symphony, band.
Nymph choir. You do? You're typing your name right there.
I had a song in it if I didn't know.
Type in Chris. Or Mark Conahay. No, not my, not me.
Sorry, did you say that?
Your name.
Highlight, underline.
All right, so who's...
You.
Who's the alternate?
After having four years, it's...
It's Zach.
Dirk's assigning people.
I guess that's why they call it city assignments, committee assignments, just because Dirk's...
All right, let's get that.
Let's skip it for now.
Events, we only have an alternate. Who wants to be the main one?
I would like to.
Question on that one because we've never...
Dirk volunteer.
This was supposed to be promoters' forums, like demolition derby and mother class, things like that. I don't think we've had a demolition derby, maybe a class, you know what I mean? We had a demolition derby meeting three years ago, and we haven't had anything since.
Great, I'll take it.
We don't have any volunteers. They asked in the first meeting, might the description of volunteering, they just wanted to be there in the night out, they didn't want to put together.
Yeah, so technically, I think, doesn't, the Western Stampede's separate. Is this one sanctioned by city government?
Yes. Yes. They actually made it so it's kind of a catch-all for anything that's been run at that, as a...
I'd be happy to stand up on one.
Two sixteen.
Hopefully, see if I can get to do something, but, you know.
I'd be happy to help.
All right, so I'll put my name there first here.
Or the other way around.
Public Affairs Director.
I think this works well, we'll go off, that's fine.
Is Kim Wells the staff lead, is that good? It says public...
I think it's Julie.
It says Public Affairs Director, sorry.
And I show the other historical preservation is alternate is Chad.
Public Affairs Director.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Parks Council, I'm having, please step up for us.
I'm on Parks Council, okay? Now that it's fine, we can do it.
So, you'll be the, and I have Chris as the alternate for Thursday.
If you don't want to be the alternate anymore, Chris, I'd be happy to do that.
I think you and I should work back and forth so that we're alternates as alternates.
The alternate alternate? We can have second alternates.
It's fine.
Sister City, Sister City, I have Chad as the main and Jeff as the alternate. Western Stampede is the mayor, and...
Conahay.
Chris. I'll move back on the sustainability, once that, I've got the superhead.
Because I have Chris as the guest.
Who put me as alternate on sustainability? I don't know.
You can put Chris, Chad, with Jeff, Hayden, and I don't think you can be chatting with me.
No, it was me.
You're the alternate?
No, no, not alternate. Taxing entities, two spots plus an alternate. Two primaries.
Alki is two primaries plus alternate.
I don't think we have an alternate.
No.
All right.
Who was?
Conahay and Zach is an alternate. And then Chamber is Zach. Who's the lunchbox?
Special lunchbox.
Oh, I know.
You can put me as the alternate on the chamber.
Can you get an alternate position on chamber board?
Now with the chamber, what there, that work? Judy?
Well, there's the Western Web Coalition.
Judy's won't fall underneath the chamber or the floors of the same person that's me.
Well, I want to do this one, but I don't want to do that one. And that's good, it's a very good one, but it's time consuming.
There's Chamber G, C, and...
So, put me as the main one on that one.
So, that's Southmore.
Yeah, yeah.
Chamber board, I don't think we get an alternate, we just get all this room.
We have Chris as the arts council.
You get an alternate for that one?
Put me in an alternate there to put that. Thank you.
Get it quicker on here. Didn't do it fast.
I know which one's the one. I know which one's the don't want, let me break that way.
Taxi. Yeah, again, there's two primaries on that one.
Two primaries, no alternate.
No, there's two primaries, two alternates.
Oh, I think, so I can be an alternate then, maybe. You guys blur it now.
Okay.
Oh, the other ones are...
Okay, so there's a primary.
Three, it's Judy, that's right.
You can just list it twice, people watch.
List it, all of the others have to be the mayor, so...
When is the mayor, I mean, I was Judy for pod, and Sophie was an alternate.
Was.
And Chris, yeah. All right.
So, all of these others, we're all married to the end of the house, so no suspicion based on there. Chad, we get through the rest, because we got my main for the day. I think we've got everything.
We still need to get to that one. Yeah.
I still think we need to have a council discussion.
Well, it's going to have to back, it'll come back.
We are here, you can just... Just fucking...
Compensation.
He's gone.
He's gone. Yeah, let's move forward.
I heard that later.
What is the citizen committee?
We do have another ad hoc committee, which was the city center project, and that would be that. That's whatever, whenever we had, we were the former ones to do the city center project, we were on the council side. That's where we have discussion.
Judy?
On the appeal board, you can put my name there.
Do you want to just, if they want to move on, Chris, do you want to save that name out to me and while you guys are working on your other stuff, I'll fill in the stuff that is missing?
There's only one thing I need to do, I promised the commission.
Okay, go ahead.
Jordan River Commission.
Okay.
That, they've moved that.
The Jordan River Council?
Yeah, I asked the commission.
Okay.
They moved that to the first Thursday. And we did, excuse me, they moved it to the first Thursday, which doesn't match me.
What should be on there?
What time is it today?
It's from nine to eleven A.M. Okay, let's go.
What do they do?
So, they're going to be working on the Big Bend project for us. They take care of the Jordan River.
Like the trail on the river, and...
Yeah.
I don't know.
You can strip on that too.
What time is it working for? They switched it, it was on the third Thursday, now it's first Thursday, and it's on the first Thursday.
I'll sort it out. I would like to... So, city center project was Chad and C.C. too. Dirk, that's not...
Put me?
City Center Project.
I did hear it.
When do you need...
It's an annual project, it's an annual meeting.
Sure.
I'll, yeah, I'll do that.
That'd be it.
Yeah, he can do that.
Sorry. What is E.D.B.G.?
We need to go on one of the girlfriends.
We either have the...
Okay, you can put me on that.
That's a really good one, in the spring. It's about, it's once a week, about five weeks, every year.
About three after noon.
In the spring, starting when?
No, it's every year, a year, only last for a few months.
George would like to, sir.
You can put me on that one, too.
It'd be good.
I'll do that.
Yeah, this could have been before.
Have we got everything now?
Take me off, Chris.
You can put me on that.
If Chris sits here in charge, take me off the E.D.C.C., please. Somebody else fill that out. No, you...
We don't share on the E.D.C.C.
What, oh, Western girlfriend, fire. Mayor. Does he know that?
Yeah.
What can we do, the... Verbous leaders, maybe. Get to business. I don't know, so this is business.
Anything else needed on this stuff?
For now.
And then all the other stuff?
You can put me on the ice cream committee. Ben Vander events. You're already there.
Oh, good.
It could be a subcommittee. That'd be a cool committee, the ice cream subcommittee.
It should be it.
Don't blame it.
Quick save.
The next item is our visions and goal setting for the council, and because I think the staff has been waiting for direction on several of these items that we talked about yesterday. I'd like to just get the decision from you.
You're on that. No, you're on...
I just said that before top little.
Yeah, you're good, I'll actually just move.
Breaking down, passing around, stormwater. This is the paper, it's all wet.
Okay, um, this is direction for staff from the council, and so that they can count on, you know, if we get a deciding majority, we give Mark the direction to move towards these things. What I'd like to do is go through the things that we talked about yesterday, that we will talk about now at length, and then give direction to Mark so that the staff knows the direction the city's going to go. The first item I want to talk about is police officers.
I like your idea.
I think that we need to have twelve in the next calendar budget, or fiscal budget. I know that the chief was nice enough to try and split it over two years, but I think that we have to do it immediately, starting in July, so he can start ramping up for that. How do we pay for it? I guess there's a discussion that we need to be had here, as you started out with this. Does everyone on the council believe that we need to maintain a twenty-five percent surplus fund balance?
I'd want to say as close to that as possible. Basic, it's one basic principle. You have a homeowner, you keep a savings account. Never know when you're going to have a, in a home, it's like losing your job. In a business, it would be called a recession. You want three or four months of steady income. For me, it doesn't need to be twenty-five, it's on the closer to twenty-five versus the fifteen. It doesn't need to be over by you means.
We've been over for four budgets now, over the surplus budget, surplus fund balance, we're scheduled to be over it this year. Now, mind you, we've got to follow by that statement. We're scheduled to be over it by two point nine million this year, but that's with a three million dollar influx of money in the budget initially. So, really, it's balanced, but I can assure you that our finance people are very conservative and will be in the surplus fund balance again. My personal opinion is, I don't know why the state raised it to twenty-five percent. I think eighteen percent, when it's taxed harder and taxed dollars, that should be the maximum limit that could be given savings account.
It was a simple answer, it was the recession.
Huh?
It was a simple answer, it was the recession. That is why they raised it. They saw municipalities who suffered through the recession, including us, and those two years when we had to be really tight, it was literally that budget that helped us make decisions, we didn't have to lay off what we did. That's...
That's why.
That argument could be made. Well, that's legislatively, that's why we did it.
I, I just wanted your opinion. Do you think that you need to have...
Chris is trying to...
Twenty-five percent.
It's a statement.
I'd like to target twenty percent.
That's what I look to.
I was just going to say that if it's not twenty-five percent, I think we need to put a number that we do want to target. I don't want to say we need less than twenty-five percent and just...
No, I mean, that way you don't have to make... The thing that's offending to me for four budgets now is to go over the surplus fund balance and then hurry up and have to move money.
Yeah, I don't like that either.
And it looks, it just looks not good to the citizens, so that's what I'm saying. Then if you have twenty percent as your target, then if you go over by a couple million dollars, you're still under the maximum state allowance, by law, so that's what I'm... But, so, the, at least the first year, I think that we can, it's a million dollars, chief, right?
Um, roughly a million dollars.
The first year, then we will, with the council, the second year will have to count for, you know, ongoing, it's not a fix. Putting one-time monies in is not a fix. Again, finance would probably disagree with me, but I can assure you, we're going to be over the surplus fund balance again this year. Mark even disagreed with me, but...
I'm sorry, but I strongly disagree. You don't, you don't budget, you don't spend money for personnel on one-time expenses.
And I'm saying it's not a one-time expense. For four straight years, we've been over as much as two million to four million dollars, to six million dollars, and so it's not a one-time expense. It's an ongoing surplus fund balance. We have eighty-four million dollars in the state treasury because we continue to go over the surplus fund balance, and we just shift it into another department, and so it's not on time money because I see it.
Which is all green, but the problem is, is you're not budgeting for it. I want to see an income that offsets the expense. I'm not comfortable, I'm sorry, Ken, you weren't at the end of the recession when we were laying people off.
I was in the heart of the recession.
Right, but for those two years, we suffered when we tried to build up to where we're at right now. And you cannot budget for anything that's, where you don't have an income. You have to have an, you have to have an income for your personnel.
Well, yeah, my, my opinion on this is, is we need a, a long-term funding solution for it. I don't want to put it in place saying, we have extra money now, so let's put it in place. I'd like to see a long-term solution, like, because we're not going to hire twelve police officers and then fire them in three years or whatever if we don't have that surplus fund balance, right? So, we need an ongoing, I think that's what Chad said, is we need an ongoing fund source for these, I mean, we, two years ago, three years ago, raised property taxes for eight or nine police officers?
I never did it until last year.
And, well, what I'm saying is, the property taxes had to be raised to pay for nine police officers. Now, we're talking about adding twelve without raising property taxes, or without raising any taxes, without some other funding source. I'm just thinking we need to figure out what the long-term funding solution is for this. I agree, we've got some short-term surpluses that we need to deal with, absolutely, but we need a long-term funding solution because police officers are not going to go away.
I agree, and so you don't think four years of history is a solution?
Well, I don't think that, not necessarily, if we start balancing budgets, like Mark's saying, we're not going to continue, I don't think we can count on continuing to have any surpluses.
If you want to use twenty percent as a target, that'll be fine, but a lot of this I'll be using it for a one-time only. There's things I know that we'll probably have to replace for a long time, that's how we'll bring it down to the twenty percent. So, our police officers, it's going to have to be taxes, fees, or whatever, everything that makes in the general fund, if I can do it, I'll, I'll do that. That's the mandate from the council, I'll try to make twelve. Right now, I was looking at five.
Well, in my opinion, there's nothing more important than getting the police staff, I'm going to see you right now.
Yes, so a little bit of approach. Rather than say, okay, the budget as it stands now is perfect, it's one hundred percent, if we're going to make any changes like that to additional police officers, we need to find funding. If we're going to make any changes like that with additional police officers, we need to find funding just for that. Rather than go down a project, rather say, okay, public safety is our priority, so I want to add that into our base. And then look and see, okay, well, if we keep this as a final budget, here's how the numbers come out at the end. We don't have enough, we're short by this much. And go back and say, okay, well, what gaps do we have? Do we have capital projects that could be deferred, delayed? What other ongoing expenses are there that could be adjusted? I don't like saying, okay, well, I probably shouldn't name the particular department, but just because this department's been the way it's been for a decade, we're not going to touch their budget because, well, we're leaving that alone. We're going to have, maybe it's something that's defunct and we can chop that down. I'd rather say, at this point in time, when the budget's created, I'd like to see the additional public safety personnel included. And then see how numbers wash out. And then if we have to go back and act certain things out there, at that point, make the decision. Okay, do we increase revenues, do we decrease services? Rather than say, at this point, yeah, we're going to do this and we're going to mark up these or taxes. I, I don't think we're going to get anywhere. I think we're all on the same page with that's the priority. So I'd rather say, let's program it as a budget. And then, once we see a full budget, say, okay, within the budget, we're our priority priority. I don't think it says.
It does make sense.
It's to do what I say.
And I, and I agree with that. I think that's fine.
I mean, does everybody want police officers? I saw, I saw you say yes.
Absolutely.
I don't know who would have opposed that.
Well, in 20% for the company, we have to decide on the percentage.
I'm going to wait and see the city manager's budget. I think that there's a consensus that 20% should be the number so that we don't have to move money at the end of the year. Does anybody disagree with that?
The most support, the most support for me, thing for me is a balanced budget. We have not had a balanced budget for years.
What?
What do you mean?
What?
The budget we proposed, it was unbalanced for years. This year...
Last year was balanced by reserve funds.
It was balanced by reserve funds.
Last year.
For four years. Four years ago was the first time in the longest history we had a balanced budget where we proposed a budget where expenses did not exceed income. That's a balanced budget.
Yeah, that's debatable.
I've got the numbers, 4.4.
I see the year before last.
Last year, this year that we were, that, or, excuse me, the one we just finished, we, we proposed a budget where expenses exceeded income by 4.4 million dollars.
Now, that's what was proposed. It's not necessarily what happened.
It's not what we spent. That's what's proposed. I'm just saying, for me, it's more important to say, you know, I'm just looking at a common homeowner. They understand if you have so much income, you can't budget to expend more than what your income is. And that's what we're doing. But we're using reserves to do it, and that's not a good practice.
So I started two years ago and our budget mark was $48 million. These are real numbers that you can't, you know, you can go back and look. We're at $57 million. Now, I didn't, I didn't approve the budget this year because it showed a deficit.
And where did I?
So, but we've been balanced and we're, we're growing. And frankly, if you go back and read the agenda, I've moved millions of dollars from the general fund and spent it. We bought things, we bought a home, we bought probably seven, eight, nine million dollars worth of fund balance that we spent in the last two years. So we, and now we're still at a max on our fund balance of over $12 million. I think we're at $13 million right now. So to say that we don't have a balanced budget, we could have last year if, I think the council didn't approve a $57 million budget that I don't think we'll end up spending. I, I have to disagree with our councilman.
Well, it's just a way of...
It's a way of...
From numbers versus actual...
This came, this came from the CAFER based on our, the proposed budget. Last year was a $48 million income last year was our proposed, and you're right. Our proposed expenses for this last year was 52 million. That's $4 million out of balance. There's no questioning. I'm looking...
I think it was like $4 million.
It's $4.4 million out of balance. $4.4 million out of balance. I'm saying to the council, it's imperative that we have that in balance.
Well, that's why...
In balance, not in balance.
That's why we're getting away from program-based budgeting and doing a line item budgeting. You know, on the mark agrees with that and the councils. And Mark agrees that we should never have a deficit spending budget. So I'm happy to hear that. How it was handled by former managers is how it was handled. He's here now, so... That's priority then, how you, how you... Now, I would like to state, you know, opinions of, with $56 million in the state treasury that is uncommitted, I would prefer these one-time monies that you're talking about, Mark, and I want to hear what the council says. But I prefer, prefer to use that state treasury money for these one-time expenses that you're talking, rather than surplus fund balance. Anybody else have any problem with it?
I just don't know.
Because part of the $84 million is restricted. $56 million of that is unrestricted.
Where did it come from? Where's that money from?
That comes from surplus fund balances for years. And underspending the budget like what was going to happen this year.
Okay, so if we, so if we bring in more than we spend, like the good stewards of money do, right? We bring in more than we spend, we take the extra and have, some of that goes into a surplus fund balance and some of it goes to a state treasury?
Well, you can only have, that's what I'm saying is, you can only, that's why every year we have to move money.
Right. So if, so if we're over, then that goes to a state, a state account that has our name on it?
Yes, it's, it's our money, but, you know, banks can only cover you for $250,000 per deposit. We have way more than that in Wells Farber right now, but, but, so we, Dave Zobel transfers that money and the state guarantees it to 100% and pays like a quarter of a percent interest on it.
So that's our extra, extra savings account.
That's the savings account. It's protected money. It's the way to do it. The state, I mean, if the state collapses, we're all done, but that's the way to do it. And we have, I mean, I'm not saying it changes every week, but we had, when I mentioned it in council meeting, $84 million in that reserve fund.
Okay, and what's the, what's the restricted part? What's that restricted to?
That's for projects, that's for purchases that we're already committed on.
Like C and B road funds, anything?
That has to go to restricted...
For use, it has a specific list of do's and don'ts that we can do.
So for example, if there's 50 some odd million that we can get to, we could just cash pay for our own rec center, for example.
We could. Mark's proposal. I wouldn't do that, but...
Well, I'm just saying, just hypothetically.
I don't mind having that $56 million sitting there, but I certainly don't mind spending one-time funds of five or six million of that $56 million to get our city... The citizens paid all this money. You realize that. It's all tax money.
Yeah, so that's what I'm thinking, though, is, is I was just got off the phone with a citizen during fire department presentation. Fortunately, I had a one-on-one presentation, so I didn't listen.
Too long.
But we were talking about, you said our city doesn't show up. We need a chunk of money to put some spray paint on the street poles or whatever we need to do to get our city to show up. And so if, if that's what it takes, if we got all this money sitting there for a one-time expense, that's a perfect one-time expense. Tony, police officer is not a one-time expense, right?
I, I agree. The one thing, you know, we put it in the state pool and we get like a half a percent interest.
Right.
And yet, if you have a one-time, you have what you want to pay for now. If you've even waited one year, you probably add five to 10% to that because...
Price and pieces.
Anything else that doesn't follow the policy living.
Right.
Double. So the more you put it off, the more that's going to go. And you're not really making money by having it in the state pool. So if you want to have that as a minimum, 20%, then the rest should go towards the rec center or, you know, the new stuff.
One-time, one-time stuff.
So we just want to take one-time stuff out of our budget so our budget can do the continuing things and use this money for the one-time expenses to bring them up to speed.
For what the council and the city manager's team, I mean, it's, I'm going to give you one example that I just found in the budget. I talked to this, so this is no surprise, Mark. If you look at the, and this is not general fund, but I'm just going to give you an example of what general fund, same kind of thing. We budgeted $4.9 million in the sewer fund this year. Now, it's an enterprise fund, so this don't have anything to do with what we're talking about, but we've done $1.1 million for projects this year. You saw the screen yesterday that Dave talked about and some of them are in design and some of them, but there's no chance in the next five months, because we're almost done with January, that we're going to spend another $3.7 million, almost $3.8 million. So we're going to have a fund balance that will roll back into the enterprise fund because we budgeted for 4.9 million. And there's no chance, we may spend another $200,000 or $300,000 this calendar year, but we won't. Same difference on the general fund. Every one of the departments but one is underspent this year over budget.
And that's good.
$9 million, which is good. I, I love it. Our, our staff has done a wonderful job. Mark has helped the staff be very conservative. And so, again, we're building that, but why shouldn't the benefit be to the citizens of West Georgia?
West could benefit from it.
Okay. Making a half a percent, if that's what it is, I, I thought it was a quarter of a percent, but if we're making a half percent on tax dollars is not my goal.
No, right, then it shouldn't be.
We tax the citizens to do this and we should, they should be the one getting the benefit of it. Whether it's better roads, better streetscapes, better parks, better, all these things. At least on the unrestricted. The rest is all bound. We can't touch that. It's restricted.
Right. Talking about the enterprise funds, you know, it's not really underspending each one because you see that in every one of the enterprise funds. We come up with a project and say it takes, when we do a road, $10 million. Well, you know you're not going to do it in the first year. We get you encumbered that money that, that year. And you know that you're not going to spend it the next year. You never spend the same dollar for us. And so it will show it underspent that year. And then that money that will roll over to the next year on that same project and they don't spend it for something else. So it's pretty common with an enterprise fund to see that.
Do we get interest on the enterprise fund?
Well, it'll, it'll still be in the bank until we do need it. But it's still encumbered for a specific project.
Chris has a comment.
Yes, Chris, this is a little bit tangential, but I can guess how we ended up with this, but anyway. One of the things I went, my first, well, my, my first year on the council, I went back and I asked IT, not Michael, by the way, higher Michael. I asked, why was there, why was there so much funding that was in this budget and it came so much under? Well, they had a budget of $400,000, which they said they needed, but there were other ways around it. In the end, my person was, that was just significant sandbag. I felt like a hero being able to come back and say, look, I can return almost a half million dollars to the general fund. Well, in the meantime, we had parts that we're going...
We needed the money.
Because we saw on paper, okay, well, the money's going to be going over here.
Right.
That, that's kind of where Chad's argument comes in, saying, on paper, we need to make sure our revenue equals our expenses. But we also need to make sure that what's the budget is actually spent and not necessarily get away from that sandbagging as much as possible. I'm okay putting money towards different departments for different projects if we're going to use it. Sometimes, I mean, lately, a lot of our engineering estimates have been out there like, the project's going to be $3.5 million, but then we go out and then it comes back up to $2.2. Well, we already put that $3 million in the budget, so there's, there's another million dollars extra that at year end is now going to be shifted somewhere else. We, we could have used that somewhere else. So that's part of the issue that's been crazy. The other thing is with financial reporting, it's almost like we've been looking at, if you compare it to a home budget, it's like looking at your check account. You've got this much money coming in, this much money going out, and it's gearing, we're going to move this much over to our savings account. And we haven't been looking at the statements for our savings accounts for, for years. That said, it's really nice to have that, so you don't want to say, oh, 50, let's, let's go drain it all. To be able to have that when things do go south again, I mean, this week we've seen the stock market drop 550 points on Wednesday, 200 points before that, came back a bit, but it's nice to have that.
Question.
Prevent some of the uncertainty, but at the same time, it's... At the same time, it's usually gets heated and in the end it's just numbers, but the concept behind it. I, I got frustrated with the sandbagging, so I stopped trusting some of the numbers in the budget and what was actually expended. I, I'd like to see us do a lot better though. But then again, all the financial reporting, that's why until recent, we haven't had any visibility of what's going to be our savings account or the general service checking.
And I just want to state that we, when I was elected mayor, the first thing that I was afraid of was that we only had the surplus fund balance. That's what we were given as mayor and councilman. We weren't given the state treasury. I, it took a citizen to tell me I needed to look at the state treasury to see what actually there was. So first thing I did was got Rick Davis and myself, we, we signed a note for a line of credit at Wells Farber Bank, which they were quickly happy to do, so that we had another $6 million on top of the surplus fund balance. Well, stupid me, I didn't realize at that time we had $90 million in... We've decided to spend some of that as a council. But we had $90 million at the time I signed a, a line of credit at Wells Farber.
I wonder if they were happy to give you the six.
Now I, now I watch in fact the, the state treasury account, and I think we should do the same.
I agree. But, but coming back to the police officer's point and, and just the general principles as well, is that that, that money is money we can only spend once. And I think we all agree. And we can't count on continuing to add to that money if we're going to balance the budget. If we're going to balance the budget and we're going to actually have our revenues meet expenses, our surplus fund balance isn't going to grow anymore. And it's definitely not going to go over to where we put more money in the state treasury, right? Which is good. That's, that's, that's ideal.
Well, we will still, I think, because we will come in, certainly parts of the different departments will come in.
Projections and actuals are different.
It's always an educated guess.
Right, right, sure. Always is. So, but what I'm saying is, is we, we can't count on that continuing to happen. Because if a bad year does happen, then we're going to be flipped upside down really quick.
And that's why we will spend all of our money sitting in the state treasury. I would still leave that in reserve plus the reserve. That's why I wouldn't go out and build the rec center for $26 million with the $56 million. I'd rather use some of that money, like Mark has proposed, and bond for the balance and still keep that, that safety valve, because I'm a conservative, to keep that there. But I don't feel good about $84 million sitting as our tax money. That's all I'm saying. And I guess I might explain myself very well. If you've gone four years with the surplus fund balance since the tax increase, since we continue to build at a great rate, now there will be a day come when that will go the other way and Chad and I are the only ones that lived through that, that sit on the council map. That it swings the other way. And then you start to deplete the surplus fund balance. I didn't have the state treasury funds, and so there were hard decisions had to be made. And that day will come again. But if you take that four years, we're not going to bring in less money next year than we brought in this year. And every year you start the budget at what you brought in last year. That's how we've done it in the past. And I guess there is a time when that could happen, but even during the time that I'm discussing, there always is some building going on and always there's increase. Now, when you get to the point of what they call a rust city and you're built out and you become a rust city, then the whole demographics, the whole design changes. And we're, we're a long ways from that. 2030.
That'll be here before we know it.
So what I'm saying, if Mark puts his budget together knowing that we need 12 police officers, because we have the history of four years of surplus fund balance, I guarantee you we can balance the budget with a line item budget.
I, I'd have to see it, I guess, is what I'm saying. Because, yeah, because I, I just don't want to count on revenues exceeding projections. I just, I, I don't want to count on that.
The other, well, the other thing...
Well, they won't if you do a proper budget, a line item budget, they won't. By very much, anyway. Not by $6 and $8 million, they won't, for sure.
The bigger issue for me, really, when I say balanced budget, is operations. The operations is really what needs to balance. Because you can, I could buy 30 police cars, but I know that's going to last me a certain amount of time. It's not where I need to pay a, a police officer day to day. It's the operations of those salaries essentially, is the thing that absolutely has to be in balance. Because I can use millions and millions of dollars for assets that are going to last me for a lot of years. And that doesn't have to be balanced, but the important thing is the operations. And that's my point, hiring police officers, just it has to be within balance. That, anyway, that's my concern.
And I've, I've got a similar perspective point. It comes to using fund balance to pay for day-to-day operations. In my mind, that's the same, it's very similar, of these two going out, like taking out a loan to pay for, like, your day-to-day stuff. It's just something you don't do. When you start doing that, you're in trouble. When we put together our operations budget, at least the bottom, we'll, we'll, we'll need it as a base. pay, fire and all those essential services, and we'll see where the funding runs dry and then cut the line.
To use your analogy, the homeowner and the checking account and savings account, right? We have a big savings account, and our checking account always has a little bit extra in it, which is good. What we wouldn't do is say, well, look at our big savings account, we've got 15,000 dollars in savings, say, at a homeowner, that's our extra, and so I'm gonna go buy a new house, because I know I can cover the mortgage for this year with that 15,000 dollars. That's what I'm saying is what we can't do. You know what I mean?
A better example would be, my salary's only enough to cover my cable TV bill, so I'm gonna go to my surplus, my savings account, use that to pay for groceries.
Right, same thing.
I kinda wanna flip around and say, okay, public safety, that's one of the staples, we'll do that. We'll see what other things are out there. There may be other departments that are similar to our cable bill that have just been out there untouched for decades, that because they haven't changed anything for their budget, has been questioned. I'd rather question that first.
For the past two years, just so you know, our savings account, we're only required, we're only allowed this much from the state. First year, the mayor got a letter from the state auditor saying we're over fund balance and we had to move money quick. And that, so the fund balance, we've never really gone into it since I've been in office. Alls we've done is spend it, so, and I see projections from lying about that we're gonna have more. I mean, sales tax is at 1.6%.
I just, I think that everybody, there's not one member of this council that would say, let's spend this money to balance our budget, okay? Now, we did that last year. I didn't go for it, but we did it. 3 million dollars deficit spending to balance the budget. Mark says he would never do that, he's never done it in his career. I would never do it in private business. That'd be a recipe for disaster.
We have to have extended...
We need to tell you two things. It always happens when you put together a budget, is the problem is the city managers and town leaders of the city ahead. The finance director will understate revenues to create a pad. A department head will overstate expenditure to create his pad, and so that narrows my window down and I have to find out what is what. It's a matter of trust. As long as it's in the, in the long terms, the manager will build that trust with the department saying, look, if this is what you need, put down exactly what it is and I'll make sure you get it. If prices go up in that interim, I'll help you get more money to do it. But when they say, I need a 100 dollar item, but I'm gonna put down 125, that limits who can spend the money someplace else. So it's, all of the budget is, is a matter of trust, and that's what we need to build on.
I'll say, and have, you know, some of us have been complaining for a long time. You gotta have accurate, accurate data, and you gotta have it in real time. It doesn't do any good to find out six months after. And we're good at that, and they're working hard to get that for us. I'd like to, just before we eat, if we can, maybe we should, I want everyone to be able to tell us what your goals are for the year and vision, but I, the staff needs these things, I'm covering, that's why I am up here. Maybe we can get this, if it goes too long, then we'll be up to lunch. The secondary water issue. Two members of the council haven't been in on the discussions, other than last closed session for deep discussion. I believe 100% of the councils in favor of moving forward with the west side secondary water systems up, right?
I don't have enough information yet, I couldn't tell you. If there was a vote today, I'd probably abstain.
I'd like to do it. I was, we had that town hall looking at the three different plans, and I was the only citizen that showed up. So I wonder how, what the desire really is. When I moved here, it was huge, but I don't know. And that's my curiosity. I'm not sure if people are really wanting it, but my concern is when, you know, looking into the opt-in, thought, oh, that could be a disaster. And that's my worry. If I failed, people wouldn't opt in, is it worth it? And it's a question in my mind still.
And I don't think there's anybody that, you know, so I can give you my opinion and then I'd like to hear others. I don't think there's anybody that lives here today that cares whether or not they get secondary water at all. Even those in the dry pipe areas, I don't think they care.
I have a dry pipe.
They don't, they don't understand that we run out of water. Chad could tell you more, a lot better, because I'm sure he's been watching our, you know, we've got a 20% more than what we're currently using ability to purchase. So I see we don't have any chance but to do it, but I wanna hear you all say that. Chad?
Thank you, Mayor. This is probably really informational for Derek and Zach and even somewhat Sophie, because I don't recall if you were on the council, I shared this or not, maybe you were. But Jordan Valley Water Conservancy knows that we will not have enough water at Buildout. We will not. It's a fact. And that's a lot of why your water, it's going up every year, is because they're planning for when we need water, 25 to 30 years from now. They're starting to build it up. They're spending my, literally, we've made decisions to buy property in Davis County so that we can bring water down from the Bear River. Those are, we're working on it now. It's amazing how good the foresight is. But the issue is, to get that water from the Bear River, it's a 1.7 billion dollar project. It's an enormous number. Jordan Valley Water's portion of that is 717 million dollars. So that 700 million dollars roughly, that needs to be brought about by the communities west of the Jordan River. And for me, my viewpoint is, eventually we know we're gonna need that water, but if I can move that from 2050 or 2060 to, let's say, 2070 or 2080, that's to our benefit. Now, we can keep the rates down now so that by the time we get to that need, it's been much more affordable. We spread it over that much more time. That's where secondary water, for me, it's not even a debate. Whether people want it or not, we need it.
We have it, right?
Yeah, that's all it's gonna do, is extend that period out, and that helps us out. Now, it's not just a West Jordan thing, we need that same commitment from our neighbors, but we can be a leader. I mean, Harriman's done a good job with some secondary water.
So has Rupert.
And we can, we can be leaders on this forefront with the other communities and say, you need to do the same.
First, completely in agreement with Chad on this one, 100%. When it comes to the discussion as to setting it up, I think it's one of those things that we have to do. We started early 2000s, required it, then when the market went south and money wasn't there, we bailed on it, and I think that's gonna have a huge multimillion dollar price tag on it in the end. I think the sooner we start, the better off we're gonna be. When it comes to the policy as to rolling that out, I spent a lot of time in California and Arizona this last year, and water drought is utmost concern. It's something that's coming this way. I mean, we have water right now, but they're already fighting to try and get more of our water out of Vegas. We heard the whole state value arguments and concerns. It's only a matter of time until the stuff that's in Northern Utah, Idaho, Wyoming that we're trying to get to, others are gonna start fighting for that as well, especially on the west coast. It's something we need to do. When it comes to meeting it up, I don't think opt-in, opt-out is even an option. I think it should be treated like water, which are there, is hooked up with the definition. That's just one of the things that's required. Access to drinkable water is a basic necessity. I probably, I put water above public safety.
Water is public safety.
Yeah, I don't wanna see an opt-in, opt-out if you're in an area that has access to it. You can adjust your rate by not using that thing, using Kool-Aid instead, but we need to try and make it available more than that.
Yeah, I don't think that, that's why I would propose that they get charged, charged, I don't, I don't wanna put 400 dollars into meters for every house out there. It'd be great on the new developments, because the developer and owner will pay for it, but for us to go in and put meters in, I think that you just charge, charge per unit, residential unit, and I'm just, nobody's gonna water their lawn to the point that their basement's being flooded. Okay? They're still gonna water, they still have to, go ahead.
I would like to see one, one thing about the rate. If they don't have a water meter on there, I'd like to see an ultimate charge in addition to usage, and that goes into a fund to eventually pay to have a meter added out there so that maybe we can add 100 or 200 meters per year.
I think that's a great idea, and if that...
And as soon as I say that, I don't think it should be just for folks that don't have it, because otherwise it'll, it'll never get that low if you're running your basement. I think when we implement the system, we should have a little bit of the charge, the availability charge set to retrofit, so we can bring everybody up to the...
That's a good idea.
It's a very good idea.
And then I'm thinking too, we gotta have those who have meters charged by what they use, and those who don't have meters should be charged a higher one, and if they're willing to pay for the meter to go in, then they can pay the per gallon. If they want a meter earlier.
Anyone knows, but 15% of Las Vegas is water, most of the city.
And that's really not a problem. We have the technology to do that now. That's a good idea.
So, let's just summarize and then we'll have lunch. I believe that everyone, there may be still some, you know, you have it quite up your speed, but we don't have a choice. Does anybody believe we have a choice whether to put secondary in the west side of the city? We have no choice.
Just do it.
Eight months ago, the council, seven members of the council gave direction to the city manager to secure this water right. And it sounds like we're only two weeks away from knowing what the price tag is and the legal makes sure that it can be used. So I think that we've already given that direction, so we will have that, that stuff. I think that the council has given the direction to make agreements. I've got a verbal agreement from Dan, but we need to formalize that and get that secured. With those two, with those two water rights, we get the water, if we can deliver it in the Welby Jacobs, I've talked to Richard Bay at Jordan Valley, says there's excess capacity in the Welby Jacobs canal, and they would welcome, now I'm not saying it's as easy as that, but they would welcome having the flow, three and a half second feet flow down the Welby Jacobs, because it would continue to flush the now, so that it hasn't much buildup. And the Dan thing, so, is anybody opposed to giving direction to staff that we are gonna build secondary out west? We are going to, and we talked about the reservoir system. Is there anybody that has any opposition to doing these kind of things, working towards that? Now, the funding, the funding will have to come, I believe, out of the excess water fund, I think is at 12 million right now, to purchase that water right. We get the water from Dan free based on the verbal deal. We'll make sure that that happens when we get it reduced to writing. We get that water for free, 600,000 gallons plus a day, and then we have, now some of, it's gonna have to, both are gonna have to be filled, there's gonna have to be a system set up, and a pump system. And then, and hoping we get the other one for about 4 million.
I'm interested in Dan, you know, they're paying to have that water taken away, some by trucks, some to come out. I would, you know, I would like to have them filter as much as possible, you know, wherever is that level where it's too expensive to, you know, to send it out, you know, can they filter some of it, and then we'll take it from there. Because I don't wanna be in a position of building some kind of a plant specifically for the Dan and then all of a sudden they go out of business. You know, that's, you know, I don't wanna do that.
Put our hands in the Dan basket, for sure.
My only comment on that is, you know, making sure that we have some kind of enterprise fund to chart, I mean, this is gonna be a money-making entity.
It will be a secondary water.
And those people that benefit, not the, because I'm on the east side and all my residents, however, I wanna make sure those people that benefit are the ones that pay.
Yeah, that's the whole decision. We can't build the city any further if we don't make the, so everybody in the initial purchases of water, we need to do it whole-city wise. As the water comes online and they get it for less than all the other residents, because they would be able to water the line at half the cost of what it costs me to water them now. So then they should be paying the water. You can't create an enterprise fund and charge everybody 500 dollars in that area so that we can purchase this water. That's what I'm saying, is we have water, we have, I believe it's 12 million, if my memory serves, 12 million excess in the water fund. We can purchase that water and at least start the plans until we get a district set up, set up an enterprise.
And eventually that will filter down to the whole city. Because the whole city will be paying less for water because we're using less filtered water.
The city, the growth is...
Probably do a special tube in this district. Yes. Two things I wanted to hit. Number one, with Dan, I would just, when we have agreement with them, we only accept water at or above a certain quality level. It's a sort of agreement to even have a potential with others. I know before, like Herrchild went out, that would've been another potential, they don't have much, but anyway, thought number two, Mayor, this is before you took office, we were discussing, and you have some thoughts about seeing if there's anything we can do with rainwater, which just run off things that back. I know that technically falls within jurisdiction of the state, but as we're looking at developing out further, seeing if there's something that we might be able to do to divert and redirect some of that, so that it's not necessarily we're capturing water right on the west side, diverting it all the way out to the Jordan River, recharge octifers here or route them in secondary here to reuse on loans and eventually get back into, maybe there's something we can do with the state there. I just wanted to throw that out as a thinking conversation for staff, if we're looking at some margin developments on the west side, that don't necessarily go with the curves and gotta take advantage of that for some of the resources and out there.
Great. I think we got clear direction now, Mark, for at least these two. I only have one more after lunch. Let's eat and then we'll get down to everybody's goals.
Everyone requires, right?
Yeah. Rec Center.
There's gonna be danger working.
Yeah, that's not there.
Kim and I were talking about, I have the logo and it's, we were thinking the opposite.
Yes. I forgot to get back.
He doesn't understand lots of means because of his name on this jacket.
What would be your problem?
I think he should be on the side.
Just waiting.
I was on the other side. Oh, you mean he should put a thing...
Go to Walmart. Walk into Walmart.
That's exactly what I want to do.
Do you know what, somebody who can walk to Walmart? Does anybody, does anybody mind if we just work through lunch, since we're like a half hour behind schedule? Because I'd like to get everyone's full, I'm trying to cover for staff.
Well, I need to go, I need to go grab something.
I can hook it up.
10:15?
Is that my name? I don't, I don't like, I don't want to...
Oh, you didn't want to?
I just didn't care if it was my name.
Go grab something.
Mind that.
Okay. I'll go grab something, don't worry. Yeah, I'll be here, I'll just go, I'll just go grab something. Hey, you wanna buy?
That's what I want.
I gotta go grab around for... You wanna buy the money?
There's the pickles and chips on the back table.
I guess we'll take a break.
You got water?
You got cold.
Hey, Chad?
Okay, one minute.
All right.
I can get pretty close, but we're still...
Never go to the water, you can never be this way.
Didn't you have to make the call?
The staff needs to know our opinion, a rec center, whether to proceed or not to proceed. Let me just state that I'm really elated that the budget number for the rec center is 26 million. I think that's at least 10 million less than I have for the state-of-the-art facility we're talking about, how we pay for it. Again, I believe that some of the funds should, like Marcus suggested, some of the funds should be pulled out of the state treasury. I believe that the naming rights for, ought to be offered from the council to the tune of $5 million. I don't care who wants to only up to the $5 million.
Permanent naming right?
Permanent naming right, $5 million.
So Zach only has $5 million, he can have his name.
Sorsen gave us $6 million, did I name your eyes or hair? I hear it was six, but five, okay, $5 million for Harriman, J.O. Sorsen, Rec Center. And then I also, though Jordan School District has claimed that they're not donating anything, I still believe that if they want to use it as a practice facility, a competition pool for both high schools, and possibly a third high school at some point, I believe their bill is $2 million. Now, that's just what I believe, I don't want to hear what you guys think about those ideas. Yes.
This park that they're putting in South Jordan near West Jordan, does that include a rec center?
No.
Okay.
It's an outdoor recreation center, I guess is what you'd call it, but not, you know.
But it won't be the.
It's going to be the state-of-the-art outdoor, I mean, 130 acres of pickle, pickle fields.
Pickleball courts.
Pickleball courts, basketball courts, laser, even a kayak in river they're talking about, it's got everything.
Okay, so back out, ours again then, I think that's great that we have money to do that, but what would the opportunities be to make that a private event, private building instead of city-owned building?
Would there be a, as far as.
Have a private company build that and run it and own it, and we just, like taxes, like normal?
I don't think a private individual would build a kind of building that we're talking about. I think that you could get one of the gym companies to build another rec center, but it wouldn't be a community rec center. I don't know how much difference there is in cost between membership of a regular rec center or being out of the gym business for about five years.
I've been out of a gym for about five years, so.
I have as well.
So when you say like a, like a private one, you mean like a, like a Vasa Fitness or a.
Right, I mean, anything like that. If we can break even on it, then I would think a company could make money off it and be willing to do that instead of us, and then we're not competing against a business as the government.
Jack?
That's my thought.
And this is not that I'm opposed to the rec center, it's rather just, I think, in my mind, we, and a priority, I think I have one more need that I think would be higher, and it's more for the economic development piece, and that's that I've to the horn for a long time about cultural arts. And I really, I mean, when you think of the citywide thing, we have a rec center, yes, there's a need for another, but we really don't have a cultural arts facility. I would really like to see us potentially, I mean, frankly, I mean, I expressed the opinion you over the phone call, I don't want to go down the road with the rec center rate, so this isn't news to you, but I'm willing to go down this road if we could put a cultural arts piece in there, it doesn't have to be in the same building, but at least that we keep cultural arts in the number one spot, in the priority. I really think we're missing the opportunity, because look at the economic development, that's one of those pieces that we're missing. And we talked about not showing, but cultural arts is a big part of that. And if big corporations want to come, that's one of those things they look at. And whether it's, we put an anchor building on the same lot, put it somewhere else, it really, you know, it's, I want that to be aware, I just don't like going down this idea of a rec center, thinking that's the be-all, that's going to be it, that's going to solve our problems, I think we're, I just, that was my fear with the library, going down the road with this library, not selling it, we wouldn't have the funding for cultural arts. I just don't want it to be forgotten. I want cultural arts to be on a priority over the rec center. But I think we could do it in the group, if that makes sense. Especially because we were going down the road of $38 million for rec center, and now we just learned that it might be $10 million less. To me, that's like magic. I'm like, wait, look at that, if the council was willing to go down the road for $38 million for a rec center, why don't we go $38 million and get them both? Just a thought.
Well, you can go 1%.
I'm just, I'm throwing that out, I just, I wanted to throw up this idea, it's, I talked to a couple council members about that yesterday, and I just throw it out there.
I don't mind that, I had, you know, I determined on it last year, thinking about it, I just, two things that I, for reason, the people on the west side have been promised for a long time, and they're still feeling like they haven't got the rec center, I haven't, we have the Arts Council that still cries for everything. And so, to me, the highest need was a rec center. Secondly, our population, you know, being a trainer for 25 years, our population is not physically fit anymore. Even myself. But, so to me, it's a need that we have in our community, and I hope that, it's good, that's why I expressed my opinion tomorrow, several others have as well, that this is something that's a draw, you know, to get kids off the video game, parents off. Into something that is some type of exercise, I think it's, you know, for me, it's twofold. One is, they've been promised for a long time, we even collected money for a long time with that promise, and I think it's, we don't get any more funds from, that impact these, but for a while we did, and they were promised one, and we haven't done it, so for me, it's fulfilling the promise and creating it. But I'm certainly now, especially since the budget has come in much less than I expected, I would say, I'd just want to work this design both at the same time, let's get it built.
I've been iffy on the rec center, but if we can do that, I'd be all for it.
Well, I appreciate the chance to have an opinion here. I don't, I don't want to tie them together, I think they're two independent needs, you know what I mean? I wouldn't want to hold either one of them up because of the sake of the, for the sake of the other. So I wouldn't want to put an art center hostage to the rec center being built, I don't want to put the rec center hostage to the art center being built. But we need both, let's have both. As far as the rec center goes, I think to make it a viable attraction for high schools and for other competition uses, I think it's going to need a 50-meter pool, that's my opinion. It comes at a little higher cost, but I think it's going to, I think it will pay for itself, so to speak, if I can use that term in a government setting. I think it'll, it'll end up reaping the benefits, if, I mean, if we're going to put it in, let's put it, let's do it right. Let's not build half of the facility, you know what I mean? Let's not, let's not do it halfway.
But don't they compete in a 25-meter pool now, at the high school level, not at the college level?
Don't some high school.
That's what I understand it is, is a 25-meter pool is the competition pool for high schools. Now, I didn't, I can swim, but not that good. The, so that's what I understood is, rather than the 50-meter pool, that's more on the college level, the 25-meter pool, not yard, but meter pool is the competition size of the high school.
I took that on the road to the university and talked about building a whole recreation park, that pretty big office, and he didn't care less about the 50-meter pool. You know, we were told that to become, called some kind of a, do you mean some kind of rating for the university itself? They had to have something like that, and we were basically going to solve the problem for them, to give them exclusivity, and they don't care less. When I went to this school district, I thought at least they would be interested, and they said, not only not interested, we're not going to write a letter, and not give you any money either. So I was pretty put off by the whole thing, and I don't want to spend $5 million and nobody's in account.
It's a good point, can you use, can you do water polo in a 25-meter pool? Because apparently there's.
On the memorizer, there's a depth.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Chris has his head.
Chris?
Yes. I like the direction Travis goes, making sure that we don't forget about the arts side, and we talked about that, we started, we bought the library, property exchange, and then everything seemed to die, get replaced with the rec center, so I want to make sure that that doesn't get forgotten. I also agree with what Zach was saying about kind of keeping the two of them separate. There's still aspects of the rec center that I struggle with, I like, like the idea of having something on the west side, seeing the school district, like, start with the pool, or much more middle, other, the cost of the quarters is pretty high, and so is the liability, and I'm okay with proceeding with finding out more information at this point. Where we saw some of these things, some of these facilities were subsidized by taxpayer money, 75%, if that's going to be the case, would we pay 1% of building from our taxes and the work team we need to subsidize it? I don't know that I'd want to jump into that. But if we could do something like what Fogo did, where we subsidize the building, but then it takes care of itself in perpetuity.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ryan was saying they have, what, 20,000 membership in order to be able to support that in Fogo, so what would membership need to be here, what sort, he was saying it was very specific to programming, what sort of programming would we need to be as close to that as possible, and I would want some sort of system in there to encourage that self-sufficiency. He was saying that some of these other facilities have zero motivation at all to become self-sufficient, because they do have those perpetual tax rings attacking, and so they can keep it nice and quiet, and not too many people, and they stop paying every money coming in.
That's county-run facilities, mind you, that's, that's your money being paid as well, just like our G P M center. That's why, and there's no advantage to, I think Mark has, and we've talked at length, I thought that the Harriman facility was self, just at 100%, and I guess it's still a few hundred thousand short. They don't have the community size, our west side's bigger than Harriman is, and the whole city, so I believe that, I think that's the goal, is to make it 100% turnkey and run it as a city, at a city level, because I know it's a failure at the, at this county level.
I'm not ready to dive in headfirst.
No pun, but.
Pun intended.
But I'd like to start asking questions, to find a way to make it as light as possible that it would be self-sufficient, that it be self-sufficient, because a lot of our residents on the west side, so, I know I didn't run your house on the west side, but I know someone who did, working with him, a lot of folks on the west side seem to not feel like they're really engaged with the city, they don't really seem to have a connection there, there's not really, they don't like anything we really do for them, everything's all on the west side, and they'd like some, something out there, and I'd like to see us try and build some kind of community and connectivity with the residents out on the west side. So I think this would be very beneficial, but at the same time, there's a dollar on it that I really don't want to go beyond, but I'd like to see what those people are going to do. And again, with the arts, I want to finish that one up, I don't want to be sitting on the old library for too long, I'd like to pull the trigger and just get that, get that taken care of. If we can design something at the same time, I mean, if we can sell this one for, or talk about, like, 1.2, use that.
Yeah, we're self-righteous now.
Then a few more. I, I think there's more community support for these projects, if we were to say, look, we're trying to improve this field, to various plant fields, bringing in the rec center, we're working on community art center, kind of start to round up a rebranding that began a couple of years ago.
When we went to visit some of these facilities, our whole goal was to make this thing self-sufficient, so we built the building, but anything that happens there pays for itself, so there wouldn't be any ongoing, whatever we would have to do. And at the time that we went to rec center, even if it was a new one, I said, we went to everybody, got all, we still made this mistake, that mistake, that mistake, and gave that information to us, and we went through every building, and they said, you know, we thought we needed this room, don't need that, and we looked at this room, we could have used three of those instead of one, because it just pays the break, and so we're kind of putting our program together to, what, what will people use? A lot of them have these climbing walls, almost nobody uses them, once you did it once, you're not going to do it again.
Yes, we do.
So we added ropes instead, because we thought that was programmed just over there, so ours will be the best of everything we could find out.
So is there a reason we wouldn't want to put the arts in the same building? I heard you guys say, why not in the same building?
I think it's a separate, I don't know, about, we can do it as a.
Well, you can, you can put it on the same ground.
Yeah, just like they're doing, just like they're doing with the bigger overpass projects, we've got a couple different locations, the same bricks doing, I mean, yeah, I think it lends itself better to, like, the Sugar Factory property that was here, gives us a chance to build some sort of building that memorializes to an extent what was there, plus there's still connections to the library, because the symphony and the choir would like to be able to work with them, literary arts would like to be able to work with them. To add something else right out there, I mean, you've got the rodeo, it just seems to be something that better fits here than out at a regional park. I'm not sure that I'd go in with an arts facility out, our apartment.
We're going to be working with, you know, a developer to move the city center, and that's supposed to be like a community within community, you can live there, you can work there, and entertainment is all within that block, plus you have tracks, particularly anywhere you want, you know, we need art very often. And I was thinking of having some kind of a art center there, as part of the entertainment kind of complex, and I want to negotiate with people, saying, if we gave you so many millions, we can build something like this, but that's just, you know, a thought.
Talking to some of the folks within the arts community, some of them were actually against the idea of trying to incorporate something in that city center, because they worried that right there is high visibility, high dollar, right there next to tracks, it makes it too easy for the city to say, oh, sure, we'll rent it out to you guys instead, and then bump our citizen, our residential community theater to second, third, fourth tier, so they feel like they have it home, but then they get, they're worried about that happening, so Sugar Factory property is a, still a, but still something.
And even with that, I still be open to some, I think I sit around these committees, but we really have to somehow spin, you know, the arts into a 501(c)(3) standouts organization. That should be the end. We'll do, we'll take a way to do that.
That's my goal in the next two years, is to get each one of them to stand alone, and yes, we'll still continue to contribute, because I believe our community is better for what those volunteers do, but, and then if you have a facility like you're talking about, and I have good support, they get this lot of time, not like what happened with the library, they get this lot of time in that, the band gets this lot of time, I even believe that we could have a real art gallery in that same building where, I mean, we have a lot, I don't know how many, if you walk through, I've bought several of the paintings that are in the Shore Gallery, but that's not a real true art gallery, I think we can have that with the arts facility as well, but I want them to be standalone, the youth theater, they may hate me, the theater group, the band, the corral.
Corral already is.
Okay. And then we can still supplement them, because the value of the community is because of how much time we put into their, the thing, but they always have their hand out, I'm sorry, they, they need to be standalone at some point, all of them, Jeff. They need to be standalone at some point.
Jeff, do you stand alone?
So anyway, let's summarize then, should we move to the next level, we have the RFP, should we move to the next level and add, you know, we can pick somebody and add a Should we move to the next level and add, you know, we can pick somebody and add an arts facility, or, or is this something that the council's not supportive of? I, we're kind of at that point now that the staff needs to know, Mark needs to know so he can tell all the staff members to work so hard to get this, prepare for this meeting, if we're going to go forward. I, I'm in big favor of it, in both cases. I, I love the idea of doing both. Let's do them now. Like I said, it's $10 million less than I planned on it being. And we already have the plans if we want to go to the preliminary plans. If we want to go to the Sugar Factory, and we have an estimate of $7 million to build a quality facility there. So that's less even than the $10 million that I believe we come in.
Can we still call the Sugar Factory Playhouse when we build it?
I think, I think that group owns that name. But we...
Let's ask him.
Quick tangent, I want to be careful about doing something like that because I do not want the performing arts group to think they own the building. They've already been vocal about how they don't think that, like moms who teach piano or somebody who teaches dance, then they want a place to...
No recitals?
They've been very, very vocal saying, they can just go use a church somewhere. This needs to be for performing arts only because we're the ones who have the need. No, I totally disagree with that. It's a community art center. So I, I don't want to use a name from just the performing arts. So box put away.
I like the name Sugar Factory Playhouse, however, but I agree, I think it should be open to all arts.
Maybe we can have the Sugar Factory Theater within the building or something like that.
You got the Sugar Factory Arts.
I still think you could get a name, somebody would buy a name for possibly a million dollars, you know, like Kale Center was designed and built by them, but somebody else, you could still possibly get a million dollars for naming rights of, of that facility.
Well, he said it was built and designed by...
And then you could have the Sugar Factory Playhouse.
As a city's building.
Theater or whatever. Anyway, let's summarize because we've got one more thing. Okay. So everybody has supported going to the next level at least?
Yes.
With the design.
Yes.
And add a arts, and you'll start back up with that, this preliminary design so we can get more funding?
Yeah, and we need to follow up with the county. We turned in that grant application in April of last year. We were designing 125K for designing, we've heard nothing.
I don't know that we ever got a permit.
No, I did. I turned it in myself aggressively.
That was designed for what?
If we committed 125, or 125 grand towards design of the arts facility.
We turned in the grant.
Which we did. That was in our budget last year. The county grant would give us another 125 to match that. They were supposed to have final information, they were supposed to have approvals in October about the time the merit budget decisions had been made. It should be anytime, and on the root curve.
That'd be great.
Well, and then they were also offering a 50, you can do a 50%, so you could do 50% for the design and then also 50% for the bill. And it would still be under city control, which was awesome.
I like that too.
And it would count, our contribution would be the value of the land, the value of the staff. So if we sell the old library, we get 1.2 from that, we could, and then say...
We need to save that.
Yeah, well, we're out there, we'll say 1.2 there, maybe the value of the Sugar Factory property is 800 grand. There's 2 million contribution from the city. That would make us eligible for $2 million, or grand from them. So $4 million towards a theater.
And you already applied for that, you should hear back when?
Last October.
First October.
Well, originally it's August, and then it was October. Anyway, we need to, we need to follow up. Justin also has a lot of information. He voted, I delivered it, because it was right at that transition.
We need it then.
No. But we set aside money for the capital project account for the design.
We spent some of that money on the preliminary design. We forward some of that money to the preliminary design. And Jim can give you the architect that was selected. It was RFP process. We selected an architect that had done some good, jury? Is it? Probably Jim.
Straight go ahead and talk.
So is anyone against moving forward to the next level? Is anyone against the mayor pushing some strong rate at the county level with the payment of a bond that would cover these things?
Push some money.
Because I'm not going to...
I'd like to help push.
Okay. Last thing, and then we'll, if the attorney doesn't show up, we'll move on to everyone's This one for me is a no-brainer, but I need council approvals. The 890 that we paid for city hall, $1,000 a year. I believe that it's long past time for a public works facility, which affects every division in our entire city. It's unsafe, and we can basically build a $12 million facility without increasing the budget one dime, just through only that same payment we've been paying for 22 years, and paying it now on a public works facility, so the city hall's before. Have you all been out, have you, okay, you've all been out there seeing what they're dealing with? And being, that being close, very close to the business that I've done, I wouldn't put my employees in, in that building. I can guarantee you that, with no chance of it. And I'm surprised that we, that we haven't knocked on wood. We haven't had a serious, a seri, we've had accidents, but a serious accident, there. I think it's paramount that we move now on this. What do you have?
Hellman has said why we want to bond when we have money.
Because I guess the money's, and Mark disagrees with me there, I just, I like that money as a safety valve, and I do want to use part of it for building of these things. But I like the safety valve there, and at the interest rates we're getting right now, that may change in the near future. But the interest rates we're getting, it's just a lot of leverage for the money you got.
Because it's still what we're interested in.
And one of the reasons I want to bond, I want to sell naming rights to the recreation center and the arts center, and the goal is, because I want the county to pay the payment. We deserve it, our citizens deserve it. We've been, we've been passed over for years, and Mark would stand with me on this, but I'm the guy to tell them, we deserve it. I know he'll stand with me, but he, he don't like doing the China cause.
Go ahead, have a look.
He's more of a mellifella than I am. But we deserve it, our citizens deserve it. There's no question. Does anybody question that fact?
Who is on that board?
No, I'm talking about going to the mayor. That's a different government than we have here.
Ben McAdams?
I'm talking about giving right up to the mayor.
And he can do that?
I already sold the seats last week, but I haven't been to the mayor yet, so.
Okay.
We did, I mean, hey, I gave you the figures of how much we paid in property tax and personal property tax, and that funds. Our staff was good enough to get that for me. The million dollars a year is nothing.
But if you do that, certainly take care of the deep knocking for some of the, the heartbeat.
That's, I think both of them can happen without any impact or, I believe that, and I can guarantee it, of course, well, I know what the public works facility can, without any impact or benefit. I believe that we can negotiate with the county, zero impact to the budget for the rec center and the arts facility. Because I, we were figuring that 35 million, the, that's what we estimated, the original preliminary design was 35 million.
So if we do the public works at that location, then we would lose some money if we sold that to a business because that's a prime location. But if we keep it at that location, it'll cost us less to do it because we already own the land and the infrastructure's there, and we're just kind of shipping things over. Is that correct?
I think that the, I think that based on the figures that I saw, the preliminary figures I saw, we'll save a million dollars by doing it there because we have the, all of the utilities there now currently, and they have that budgeted in the preliminary numbers. That's why I think the, the numbers they figured were 13 million. And based on our financial staff, at the interest rate we're borrowing money at today, with the 890,000, we can get 12 million and pay for it over 15 years, I believe it is. And it covers the payment without any increase to our budget.
But if we sold that property, where we generate some income, some taxes comes in, and we go to another spot in the long term, would we come out ahead? Except we're increasing the driving distance for...
Not really, because you're going to move a public facility to another possible...
Tax-producing location.
Tax-producing location.
You can cancel itself out.
So it's, it's, I mean...
Unless there's, unless there's a lower value piece of land where you could put it and it's just as good.
That's what I was referring to, yeah.
And the problem is, is, you know, like Chris, Chris hasn't been a fan of that location. But it is almost in the center of our city. And because this is going to be the facility that finishes out at least the next five or six decades, it's a perfect location.
And that's right. They have something in the center left that is, is good for us. The only thing that we want in the satellite are the salt stations, and that we went over that before. And that's, those are some of the structures that you would have, you know, they have the...
Big steel building.
Yeah. Other than that, everyone can operate out of the same facility.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to move forward on, to the next step with that?
Yes.
Chris, I know you know.
I want to, I want to move forward and not at that location. I'm not agreeing with Chris. I'm, I, yes, I'm moving forward, just, I just don't like the location. And it's not necessarily, I just want to find, because yesterday in Brian's presentation, I don't think we got to it, or maybe I just slept through it. I didn't see where we end up with 17 soccer fields to replace when the airport's gone. And we replace these at the corner, where, where are we putting it? We're not...
I actually hope we don't ever get 17 soccer fields. I may be very unpopular, but I hope we don't ever get 17 soccer fields there. And I never, me personally, I never care if we have these 310 soccer tournaments. They cause more phone calls to me than anything else in this entire city when they hold them tournaments.
Well, for me, it's not the tournaments, it's the, it's the youth soccer.
Oh, it's, it's the kids. The youth soccer, yes. I want them to, and they don't use half the fields on the days that they use them.
All right, well, that's, that's all right. That's the answer I want addressed, is where, where do the youth, you don't even have enough football fields yet. And I want to know where these, where these kids are going to be playing. And we lose these fields, and now we're going to lose these two. So up in the upper right corner, I just want to know where they're going to be. As long as I have that answer, I'm perfectly okay with this site. That, that's it.
And I, I think we got plenty of city property that Brian did bring back. We're going to turn the time over, we have a guest, and then we'll go back to each one.
Just real quick on this one. Instead of looking at the public works facility right here, I'd like to look at some of the other property that may not be seen, but like even, even right up over here. Still relatively...
It's still centrally located.
I'd like to look forward, just not...
Yeah. No, you're good. You're good. He can probably check out this, maybe this is yours?
That's true. We took that one. Is that the now, what do you have that direction?
We just fairly briefly met on his way in here, so I will let him tell you a little bit more on himself, if you have any questions. But I was asked to try as good as someone to come and help us on parliamentary procedure questions and maybe a train on a couple of topics. So he's prepared something, and I'll turn it to him.
Thank you very much. West Jordan, currently the only place you can find two men named Kim anywhere that is not in a Korean dictator's country. Do we have a, which, no, this is...
Oh, here, here, here.
Okay, either, either, either way, I don't want to make work. I don't, I don't want to make work. I can, I can just sort of gesture if that's helpful.
It won't advance it if I put this in it?
So like the other Kims...
So there's Kim, where do you live? Where are you from?
I have a perfect golf game. And, actually, I'm going to start with a story if that's okay. Before I get into a little bit about myself. When does one vote matter? It just doesn't, right?
When's me voting?
Well, there you go. But for the most part, you know, people think, people think millions of voters, presidential elections. So last fall, a member of the state house of representatives resigned. And they held a special election of the delegates in his district to elect his replacement. Four people came forward and said, me, me, pick me. See, four people got up at the county convention center, and they said, me, 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 and we did a vote. And no one had enough votes to move along. Okay? We narrowed it to two, so two of the most votes got back up. They gave their speeches, and we voted again. Here's the thing, there's a man and a woman were the, were the two finalists. One of the women's supporters went home after the first vote. She said, I'm going home, call me if you need me. Well, they needed her, so they called her. And she rushed back to the county building as quick as she could, and she almost made it. They announced one minute left, and then that minute was up and they closed the ballot box. And this is a key point. It wasn't me to you to the ballot box. She was literally outside the building, getting ready to open the doors to come inside the building. I mean, she had her hand on the door, ready to come inside the building. Time was up, ballot closed. She rushes in, I'm here, don't close it, I'm here. She begged and pleaded as they marched the box off to the ballot room. Please, I'm here, I was right there, you saw me. And they came to me as the parliamentarian and the attorney overseeing the meeting, and they said, Kim, it's one vote, it probably won't matter, right? I said, I don't know, but it's okay. But what if this one vote matters? What do we do? And I said, Chair, because it's not my job, this is a misconception, parliamentarians don't make rules, just like lawyers don't, don't tell a client what to do, we tell you what we think you should do, and then you ignore us, and whatever, right? That's how this works. I'm seeing some nodding from, you know, the attorney, and I...
I am not nodding.
No, no, no. Personal, personal experience, that will, this is all my personal experience. Tell a client do something they don't, and they're mad they did. So I said, Ms. Chair, she was Madam Chair, here's, here's what you should do, here's what the rule says you should do. And she did it. Next slide, please. The newspapers were there, of course, the camera crews were there, of course. And this was written in the paper the next day. Party officials clearly followed the rules, which stipulated no ballots would be cast. Had it been cast, it would have resulted in a tie, which would have meant voting again. If you vote several times and it results in a tie, you literally flip a coin. The person who is reporting for duty on the hill this week could have been the young woman instead of this gentleman, based on that one vote and but for the flip of a coin. That decision that I made, my recommendation, was because she was outside the building. Robert's Rules of Order says she does not get to vote without the majority, well, basically at all, that, that's just it. Had she been in the building, had she had been this close to the, to the ballot, she would have been able to ask for an exception. And a majority of those in the room could have said, let's give her the exception and let her vote. But she was outside the building, literally, hand on the door, but that was the difference. One foot made the difference between we will vote on it to see if we, if she gets to cast her ballot, or, bummer is the legal term. That's a bummer. So it's, it's a legal term, it's Latin. It means, whoopsie. One vote matters sometimes. And procedure matters sometimes because literally, who knows what vote in the, in the state house is going to come down to one vote now? And if she might have gone different than you. Sometimes this Robert's Rule stuff can matter. Next slide, please. My name is Kim Bowman. I, I am a attorney, and I've been using parliamentary procedure for about the last 17 years on an almost weekly basis, if not a weekly basis. And so that means that I've been a parliamentary for various bodies, including the county political party, including the honors fraternity in my, in my law school, right? There's every, and, and, and every organization seems to use Robert's Rules, so it's come in handy a couple of times. Never gotten any dates. It's probably okay now that I'm married. At the time, it would have been nice.
How'd you get married without dates?
Uh, but I married, but I married a lawyer, so she still doesn't care. Didn't help me at all. But this is my contact information. I give you my personal contact information. I've left legal practice primarily and I'm in administration of the university's health sciences now. And so I've been there for a couple of years and I still manage to be a parliamentarian occasionally. And the reason I'm here now is because the former parliamentarian of the state house said, I want to do that. I'm very busy that day. Called Kim. And after five or six other very qualified people, I'm sure you've got a Kim. So I'm very happy to be here. I really appreciate the opportunity. Love, I love Salt Lake County and I love to see our, our work get done well. So if I can be helpful to you after the fact, please let me know. As I mentioned, I do practice just a little bit of law. I'm an Air Force Reserve JAG officer. And so with the exception of the brief windows where I'm out of state or whatever, I'm yours. Please feel free to contact. Okay. So you think parliamentary procedure and you think of powdered wigs, right? I mean, some, some old guy who's friends with Isaac Newton. One guy got hit in the head with an apple and changed the way we view physics. The other guy wrote a book about how to run your meeting in an arcane fashion. And one of them won a prize, the other just won a behavior. Powdered wigs is what we think of for parliamentary procedure. Some old English guy. But actually, Robert's rules are. Are made in America. This Robert guy, he was an army officer in the Civil War and he was asked to run a meeting. And he said, I don't know. What do I do? He asked somebody, they said, don't do this. So he went into this meeting and he made a fool of himself a little bit. He said, never again. He was one of those guys that never again, I will never be made a fool of again. Fool me once, fool me twice. So he wrote a little field manual that summarized what he needed to do. And then a number of years later, he was at a different meeting with a lot of different people from different places. And he realized, oh, man, this little pamphlet I wrote just doesn't cut it when you've got a hundred people in the room. Or when half of them came from New England and the other half came from California. This just doesn't work as well. So he updated, he expanded, he revised it. And he made the version of the rules of parliamentary procedure that's most commonly utilized. It's estimated that eighty percent or more organizations, when they get together, be it the He-Man Woman Haters Club or, you know, this council, they come together and they say, that Robert's rules, sort of the default position. And almost always it's modified. There's different rules put in place. So your council, for example, has put in place a couple of exceptions to the normal rules that modify Robert's rules. So it's fair to say that Robert's rules is everywhere in terms of meetings or organization. Not always well understood or utilized. And that all parliamentary procedure is not Robert's rules, but Robert's rules makes up the majority of parliamentary procedure. So the basics. Bad procedure is bad for a couple of reasons. In particular, it has a tendency, if you do it wrong, to devolve it to fighting about the rules instead of fighting about the thing you were supposed to be fighting about. That's not what we want. You can spend a lot of time on that for a little result. I've seen meetings take four hours when they really didn't need to take four hours. But, but people felt the need either because of some sense of obligation to the powery wig man to make it very proper and formal or, or just because there was an agreement. And the big concern there is damaging relationships or leaving value on the table because you don't spend your time creating options over the substantive matter. You spend your time talking about the procedures. So it's not what you're, that's not what you ran for, right? You wanted to solve the problems in your community and the way to do that is not to, you know, argue about what pen color to use. It doesn't help us. So we, we look to good procedure because it increases the likelihood of efficient mutual agreements and discussions. But importantly, and this was the most important bullet point, is no more formal than is needed. It says, for example, in the rules, Madam Chair, I rise to make a point of personal. Okay, great. Do you literally have to stand up to rise? No. Don't you have to be that formal? There's not that many of you. Sometimes you actually ask an audience of a thousand people, hey, if you're in for this, stand up, please, because it's really hard to count as a long venue. When you get a convention of two thousand people, yeah, you might literally ask someone to rise. But you don't have to rise just because it says rise. Be, be as formal as you need to and no more. The bottom point I think is really important, too. The rules were designed such that no one person can hijack an entire meeting and the majority's will should be done. However, the rules were also made, just like our constitution, such that no minority could be trampled completely. You're entitled to a voice in a vote. You may not win. You may be the only person in the room, but you basically have the opportunity to say what you think about a thing and go on the record. That's a pretty cool system. Just, I mean, like the constitution of this country itself. Pretty cool idea that's not always easy to implement. And so sometimes you need a governing body to help you work out the details of the applicability of that really great general idea of, hey, majority rules that minority rules.
I'm not trying to take away, this is one that we've had some trouble with in the last two years.
Yes, sir.
The minority views to be heard before acting by it. We've had several, many incidents where the question has been called, we hold the vote and no more has been heard. So I guess if you could elaborate on, so maybe not now.
Yeah, sure.
I want you to elaborate on that later because we've had this, that particular issue has been a big issue for us.
Well, what I've done is I've got a hand, so I, we fielded some questions that, hey, what are the things you most are interested in? I put together a couple of slides about them generally. But when we're done with that, if the rules presented, we've talked about it a little bit, we want to go more in or use examples, specific examples, please, I made myself available to you after you do that. So, but it sounds like that's a big one.
That's a big one.
So the basics, a good or a bad meeting, it really often depends on how you use the rules, right? The rules are a tool. It, it can't hurt you unless you decide to be hurt or use it to hurt someone, right? It's the knife on the table. It's good for food. It's, it's, it's bad for other things, right? So, so this is the decision that people can make. And so everyone being on the same page about how we're going to use it, that's, I think that's the important part. If everyone's got good intentions and we're all trying to go to the same place, we can disagree on how to get there. And the rules will help us do that nicely. So what's the process? This is the general process and I'd be surprised, general process. I scan through the interview. This is the general process. General lead sweeping. Everyone probably knows this, right? If you, if you were, if you were elected president of your sixth grade class, you know this. And if you're in this room, I'm going to assume. Or you're a high school officer or something. It's not your first fight in the album. So, so everyone knows, okay, you rise and address the chair. Chair recognizes you. You make a motion. Not I motion to, but I move to because powery wig gentleman things. You get a second. It's restated. Debate or vote. Debate's optional. Don't have to. We'll talk about the powers of the chair and how the power of the chair can be used to speed things up a little bit. After the vote, chair announces the result. Pretty logical. Pretty straightforward. Makes a lot of sense. The devil is in very much the details. So let's talk about some of the things that I saw questions about that came back. Quorum and vote. So a quorum, just like this, if one of these people wasn't here, you wouldn't spell the word quorum. You might have hu-rum or something else. Hu-ru, that's, that's probably something else. But for the purpose of quorum, you do need a quorum at all times. Someone gets up because they have a family emergency, they leave and you lose quorum, it's not business. The concern is that if you go ahead, your body no longer has authority to make decisions. You're allowed to keep making them, but they don't mean anything. And in fact, you can't act on them until the next time you get everyone together with a quorum. You could ratify all those decisions we thought about making, but you can't act on them until then. Might not do you any good. Your better bet's often are to just call a recess until that person can come back through your phone call or something. Or sometimes you're just adjourned. You say, listen, hey, we had a good twenty-minute run. Let's call this thing. I'll say everyone's.
Sir, does the chair have the ability to order that person to come back?
Almost never. You can, you can beg, plead, borrow and steal, but you almost never can you restrain someone against their will. From a purely legal standpoint, you could say, listen, this is your duty. You need to come and do this thing. And if they're not, then you could take a whole separate set of measures because they're just not fulfilling their obligations, right? If they just never came to a meeting, I'm sure that would be entirely different. But if, if someone just isn't there, very difficult to call them and make them be there if they don't want to. Voting requirements, number of present. That, that's always a question. Is it, okay, there's seven of us. Two of us are gone. Is it out of seven or is it out of five? It's out of five.
No.
Whoever's present. In this case, have you modified the rule?
State law.
State laws modify the rule to total numbers.
State law states that it's the number of our official body.
Oh, okay. Okay. So in this case, that's an example of a modification. So in a county party situation, I've never had to deal with that. That's a good point. And I will always defer to the people who have been doing this longer. That's an example of a conflict with the general rule. There you go. Oh, no, no, no.
And I've been a student.
Qualifiers like a lot. Ma'am, no. A lot. So, so the, the general rule is that you would do it on the basis of them are present. But in this case, state laws said, okay, fine. I guess there's your, there's your compelling. And maybe that's why they did it. Because it compels you to be there.
Because our code SA, they can compel a member to be there also. But there's the sticky.
I was going to say, that's a sticky one because if you, so anytime, okay, so this would be the distinction between can and should.
Yes. Shall or may.
You know, so, so this comes up, I hear this in certain cases, especially in emotional cases, like say a divorce. It says in the, the judge said that I can do, that Wednesday's my night, but my child doesn't want to come. Can I call the police and make the child come? Woof. Okay, if you got him there, would you really want? That could be part of the concern is that even if you have the ability to order something, is it to your best interest to do it when you can move on without them? That, that is, that is usually the case. Especially when the alternative involves like badges and guns and stuff, like that, that, that doesn't work. It doesn't look if not exist. But thank you. So, so there's your motivation, though. If, if it's out of seven, no matter who's there, and you meet quorum, obviously, quorum rules, not so like you modify. And there's your motivation either.
Just a question. It's more for us to look at later with the legal. But I believe the state statute would apply to like resolutions and ordinances, not necessarily to the Robert's rules, which are to adjourn.
And you think it's an official action of the council?
Usually it asks for liability is the word used. They concern themselves with things that are official enough that it could cause a liability.
I'd just like to get legal interpretation of state code. Because, for example, we had a meeting recently where two members left in the middle because they had some obligations. So five left. And we want to adjourn. It takes a majority vote. Is the majority three or four at that point? I mean, it's just an adjournment. And three, I think, would be sufficient. But do you really need four?
On that issue, yeah.
But you see what I'm saying? I mean, there are issues and I'd really like to get a legal interpretation of the state statute in relationship to that government.
And so to that extent, you know, I would defer to your, to your city attorney if, if a memo was to be written to that effect. My, my guess is that, and we can talk about this when we get into, you know, unanimous ability of the chair. If it's obvious, like, hey, we're done, it's probably okay. You don't have to necessarily leave the meeting open for the next two weeks until the next, because it's bi-weekly. That's usually the case. But, but I'm.